Teaching a large class of students tonight, so I have to get out there. All right, this is the BA lanes and I'm very pleased that we have such a large and distinguished group of people to help us go through this because we have not only our HR staff, we also have representatives from all of our teaching groups. So I'm very pleased that we have such a collaborative group working on that. So Dr. Braybrand, would you like to introduce this and as we pass it off to Mr. Smith?
Well, I'm going to share it with Mr. Smith, but I want you to note, look at everybody who's before you tonight, school board. We have leadership team members, we have association leaders. This is the kind of collaboration that we want to create in Fairfax County to solve problems. As I arrived here 15, 16 months ago, we were doing a multi-year compensation look. We had begun to make that crossover, but there was clear there were some challenges in what was communicated and how it was communicated. And I believe today, we are bringing this board a solution that recognizes the value of our teachers and how they contribute to student success here in Fairfax County, which is the core foundation of our strategic plan. And I want to applaud Mr. Smith for the work. I simply went to him and said, Marty, please help pull people together and let's come up with a solution after you all directed me last year to do so. So this is that work and we look forward to sharing it with you. And I'll let Mr. Smith begin.
Okay, great. Mr. Smith, and I also want to thank staff again because we met and you made adjustments to our presentation today to make sure that
Certainly.
It was as clear as possible. It is a little complicated, but I welcome your presentation, Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you. And so I do want to say that this has been just a great process of collaboration. We've done collaboration in the past with our associations. We have classroom teachers here at the table today. But I think it's also important to note that this collaboration, while it was directed from the board, this will be the first time where we've actually sat at the table together to present. And that really speaks to the level of professionalism during the meetings with our colleagues at the table and our overall commitment to ensure that we do this and do it the right way. I do want to say that as we created the scales initially and as we developed the scales, specifically the BA lane scale, one of the things that we didn't do well enough is that we didn't communicate well enough with our employees what the total impact of those decisions would be. We felt like we had those conversations here in this room, but we didn't do our due diligence with our employees. And so we hope that by bringing forward these recommendations today, that we'll be able to rectify some of that, knowing that we won't be able to get there for everyone. We know that there may be some employees that is part of the recommendation on how we address those employees who are at the top of the scale, who may not see any increases. But we will get there for practically everyone else who's been impacted by this change. I also want to note that this is Dr. Helen Nixon's first work session, so we're glad to have her at the table today. And I do want to let our folks, because again, this isn't just staff, to just quickly introduce yourself around the table so that we know who we are here. So why don't you go ahead, Kevin?
Kevin Hickerson, President of the Fairfax Education Association.
Becca Farick, President of the Association of Fairfax Professional Educators.
Larry Little, PE teacher, Fran Conia Elementary. Oh, and FCFT member.
Tina Williams, I'm School Counselor and President of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers.
Duran Thompson Elementary School Teacher, Woodley Hills Elementary, FCFT member.
Michael Drager, Department of Human Resources.
Helen Nixon, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
And Kimberly Adams, President-elect Fairfax Education Association.
And just as we did with the principal selection process, I'm going to be the interjecter as part of this presentation. So we're going to give it over to Mr. Drager to actually do the presentation. And then we have different members of our panel who are going to present different slides as well. To get us started and to help with this analogy, I'm a former elementary school teacher. I actually say that I'm still an elementary school teacher. I just happened to moonlight as the COO for Fairfax County Public Schools. If we could go to slide nine quickly behind us before we begin, I just want to help frame the conversation that we're going to get into. It's interesting to think that if you look at this scale, it shows the current scale, which we have begun to implement, that is the blue portion of the scale. And when we talk about those teachers who would be grandfathered, they're on the yellow portion of the scale at the top. And the green portion of the scale of this graph shows the original pay lanes. The discussion that we're going to have is really about going from the blue scale over to the yellow scale and eventually coming back to the blue scale. And we've been using this analogy of possibly trains passing. And so if you think about two trains that are running concurrently and having to leap from one train, which is on the blue line, over to the yellow and sort of hang out there for a while until the blue train catches back up to you, it might be a way for board members to really think about this conversation as we get to some of these slides. It's an analogy, trying to create that analogy for you, but really it is going from the blue train over to the yellow train and hanging out there for a while and then eventually jumping back on the blue train when it catches up to you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Drager and then get on with our presentation.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the board. For the agenda today, we're going to recap the background on the BA lanes, review the work to date by our work group, share the work group's recommendation, and share a scenario for how employees will progress on the scale based on that recommendation. Looking at the background, in 2016, the teacher salary scale was redesigned to provide market competitive career earnings. On the redesigned salary scale, teachers toward the top of the bachelor's lanes, the BA, the BA plus 15, and the BA plus 30 pay lanes, lost earnings potential. This change is shown on the two charts here. The chart on the left shows the current redesigned salary scale for FY19 for the BA lanes with steps one through step 19. The other chart at the bottom of the slide shows the higher steps in salaries for the BA lanes from the FY17 grandfathered BA lane scale. This scale includes steps 20 through 23 for the BA and BA plus 15 pay lanes, and steps 20 through 23 plus the three longevity steps for the BA plus 30 pay lane. The past two years, the board has authorized step increases for employees at the higher steps of the BA lanes. This has meant that employees already on step 20 or higher on that chart below, on the FY17 grandfathered BA lane scale, were able to move to the next higher step. Also, employees on step 19 of the redesigned scale were able to move up and access step 20 on the grandfathered BA lane scale. So with our work group convening and worked a great, again, it was convened this summer to recommend a permanent solution to mitigate the lost potential earnings for teachers towards the top of the bachelor's lane. The work group, as you can see, has included representatives from our three teacher associations. The work group has also included central office staff from the Departments of Financial and Human Resources, as well as the Offices of Communication and Community Relations, Professional Learning and Family Engagement, Research, and Strategic Improvement. And again, the work group is meeting over the summer and into the fall to discuss the concerns and potential solutions for the BA lane employees. So approval of the FY19 budget included an amendment requesting options to address the grandfathered BA lane employees, including but not limited to step 14, step 16, and step 18. During our meetings, the work group reviewed and considered these options and provided here some costing informations for each of those. The estimated total cost for grandfathering employees at step 14 and higher would be 39.1 million over 17 years. The total cost for grandfathering employees at step 16 and higher, again, accessing those higher steps, would be 37 million over 15 years. And the estimated total cost for grandfathering employees step 18 and higher would be 31.9 million over 13 years. And for all of these and any of the options, you're looking at first year costs for FY20 of 0.8 million. So after, nope. Got ahead of myself, sorry. After reviewing the issue, the work group is recommending the grandfathering of employees on step 11 and greater as of FY19. This recommendation is made with the assumption of a 1% annual market scale adjustment applied to the redesigned teacher scale for future years. With this assumption, teachers on step 10 and below will see greater earnings from the redesigned scale than the FY17 grandfathered BA lane scale. Teachers on step 11 and higher will lose earnings potential if they only remain on the redesigned scale going forward. So in other words, again, teachers on step 10 and lower receive earnings from the redesigned scale that will exceed those salaries found on the FY17 grandfathered BA lane scale. And teachers on step 11 and higher will benefit from accessing the higher steps and salaries on the grandfathered BA lane scale. I'm going to hand it off to Tina here for a moment so she can talk to what we mean by grandfathering here with the recommendation.
Thank you. So providing a clear definition for grandfathering for this work was very important for us at the beginning of this process. Based on how the scales were introduced, we thought this was really critical in regards to the employees on the BA lanes. So the definition is doing no harm to employees impacted by this redesign and to allow them to reach full potential earnings.
Thank you, Tina. Slide seven, we have a chart.
I want you to note that the grandfathered scale.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a note there that the grandfathered scale will not benefit from market scale adjustments as it is already above the market.
And we have some solutions and recommendations at the end of the presentation and how we might address those teachers who are currently at the top of the scale. Since, again, if you're in the yellow portion of the scale, you are above the scale currently, you're above market. And there was a time when we had you frozen. And with these recommendations, we would allow you to move through your previous scale. But again, you would not be eligible for any market scale adjustments. But we'll talk about that as we get to those slides.
For slide seven, we have a chart showing how many employees will be impacted by the work group's recommendation. I'm going to turn it over to Becca for a moment to help explain further.
This is really just a visual representation of bringing the scale adjustments back to benefit everybody back to step 11. I know when we first heard about this and we were most concerned about the people in the 20 and above, and then we also realized that it's not just those at the very top of the scale, but it was everyone who was playing by that set of rules since they had first started working at FCPS. So I really thank Michael Drager for doing the math and showing us very clearly how giving consideration to those on step 11 and above really covers all those who would have lost potential earnings.
And again, on the chart, if you look, there's 643 employees on step 20 and higher on the BA lanes. And those are the gold shaded cells towards the bottom there. And these employees are already on the FY17 grandfathered BA lane scale. And under the recommendation, these employees will be able to continue stepping up to the maximum step of the FY17 grandfathered BA lane scale. Again, that's step 23 for the BA and BA plus 15 lanes and the longevity three step for the BA plus 30 pay lane. Before step 20, you see above that, there are 954 employees on steps 11 through 19 on the BA lanes. And these are the gray shaded cells. And under the work group's recommendation, these employees will also be able to access the steps higher 20 and above as they step forward.
And that's going back to that train analogy of you'd be allowed to stay on the blue scale. And when we get to slide nine, you'll see that when you get to the top of that scale at step 19, you would step over into the yellow grandfathered lanes. And that will be much more evident when we get to that slide.
Next, we want to show a couple of charts to help show the progression of the redesigned scale, kind of that slide nine we showed earlier, and how that covers an employee's who will progress on that. So employees currently on steps 20 and greater will continue to step on the FY17 grandfathered BA lane scale. Again, this is steps 20 through 23 for the BA and BA plus 15 lanes, and steps 20 through 23 and the three longevity steps for the BA plus 30 lane. And employees on steps 11 to 19 will remain on the higher paid redesigned scale until step 19. After step 19, those employees will move over to the next highest step on the FY17 grandfathered bachelor's lane scale. So as we were previewing earlier, we have this chart showing the progression of the BA lane salaries from FY16 and on with a 1% annual MSA applied to the redesigned scale in future years. Help us explain this further. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin for a moment.
So yes, as you can see, as was explained by Marty, the green bars represent the original pay scale and the blue bars are the non-grandfather pay scale that is being implemented right now, with the yellow being the grandfather pay scale. I kind of, I don't have the train analogy. I think of it as positive zombies. Like eventually, everybody is going to be taken over by this scale. I'm sorry.
That's elementary versus high school.
I teach high school kids.
[laughing]
No, but in all seriousness, you know, as Michael said, this also takes into account a 1%, you know, market rate adjustment. And, you know, by 2032, it will be, pretty much the entire scale will be taken over by that point. If the future school boards choose to do so and give a market rate adjustment that is more than 1%, that could mean that the scales could move faster and that the takeover could be, you know, completed quickly.
Thank you. Moving ahead to slide 10 is kind of the same chart. And now we'll look at an example of how an employee progresses based on the grandfathering recommendation. And for that, I'm going to hand it off over to Kimberly Adams here to help out.
Thanks. So here, I don't know if I want to use the train analogy or the zombies, but we see the green line of an employee who began this journey, I believe, on step eight in FY16 and will now be progressing through the scales on the current scale. And when they get to their step, where are they, step 18?
Step 19.
Step 19 of their scale, they're going to be moving over to the grandfathered scale in the yellow where they are not a zombie. And then they will progress to the end of their grandfathered scales where they will then meet up with the new scale. And that scale will overtake them. And at that point, they will begin to receive the market scale adjustments.
So again, I may have had the cursor in the wrong point. So you start here and you progress on the blue. And then when you're at step 19, on the previous recommendation that we had for the board, when you were at step 19, you were frozen. You were frozen and you stayed there until the scale caught up to you. What we're recommending is that when you get to step 19, you would then step into the yellow grandfathered scale. And then you would move through that scale as you normally would have at the FY17 rate because that is still above the market. And then you would wait until the blue scale or those blue zombies overtook you. And then jump back onto the blue scale, the non-grandfathered scale, where you would be eligible then for market scale adjustments.
So the total estimated cost for grandfathering employees on step 11 and greater will be 40 million over 19 years. And the cost modeling does have assumptions built in, and those are that first, the step equals years of service, that employees work for 30 years, assuming just a full 30-year career. We know they work less and some work more, that attrition rates continue based on historical rates, and that the redesigned scale receives on average an annual market scale adjustment of 1%. And finally, that the redesigned teacher scale is fully implemented in FY20. That's the starting point for kind of those blue bars going forward. Additionally, the working group, as Marty was mentioning earlier, recommends consideration for a yearly bonus for employees at the top of the grandfathered BA lane scale who will not receive pay increases. This is employees, again, at step 23 on the BA and BA plus 15 lane, and the longevity three step for the BA plus 30. And again, the chart at the bottom now summarizes the cost of the work group's recommendation for step 11 and the other options considered. Again, all the options seeing a first year cost of approximately 0.8 million in FY20. Finally, as we wrap up, as the work group was meeting, there were some topics, the topics of tuition reimbursement and master's equivalency came up during our discussion. In focusing on a solution for the BA lanes, we did not have time to discuss these items at greater length that they required. And thus, there are opportunities for further collaboration around these topics moving forward with our work group. And so with that, I'll turn it over to questions and discussion.
Okay, there. The appendix does show charts that we have seen before, the salary scale, teacher salary comparison. In other words, our goal of trying to get everybody to market. So it is attached and you have seen those all before. Okay, so far I have Ms. Schultz, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Cevins. All right, I will look for others wishing to speak. Ms. Schultz?
So it's hard because we don't have pages for our slides, but on mine, it's slide seven.
Okay.
So which is the table? There we go. So I'm trying to understand and maybe that last bit about what it's going to cost over time, but trying to unpack this, I mean, this is a very well-done table, actually. It took us a while to get here. But what you're saying for gray and yellow, or canary or whatever that is, is that the recommended plus the currently grandfathered would be for the balance of that, those discrete individuals, however much that adds up to, 7, 9, 1,597 employees, for the balance of those individuals' careers?
Yes.
And not anybody else? Like, it's only going to be 1,597 individuals from that point forward?
Yes, we're saying that because for those individuals who are currently on step 1 through 10, they're going to actually benefit, receive the full benefit of the new scales. And so when we look at those individuals who are on step 11, we recognize that they would not receive the full benefit of that new scale. So we've had to back it up to step 11. And so as you look at the cost, it's for that group of employees as they move forward, we would be paying for those employees. And then as they come off, those costs would eventually go down as they retire or leave the system.
So what I don't see here, and maybe not everybody gets it, or maybe it's not necessary for everybody, but it is for me to understand. Can you advance it one slide? No, I'm sorry, two slides. The problem I've always had with this slide is it doesn't show the distribution. It shows the range, but it doesn't show the distribution. So for example, you could have on pay scale 19, which is the second purple, it shows up purple, we're not colorblind in case anybody's watching this, it does show up purple. You show the range from, it looks like, I'm eyeballing it, 50 to about maybe 78,000. What's the distribution of employees on 19 over that range? Are 90% at 70,000 and above? Are they evenly distributed across the range? This talks about the breadth of the range because in the table that we were just looking, out of the 1,597 employees, although somebody could be step 11, they actually could be close to retirement because they could be a second career. I mean, they might, I mean, I don't know. I'm not picking on step 11, but I'm just saying, anecdotally, is this pool spread from, you know, a 24-year-old to a 54-year-old? Or are they more clustered closer to the end of their careers? What is the long-term impact? Like, are we going to be dealing with this for 20 years? Are we going to be dealing with this for eight years?
So you're right. Roughly years of experience and step do align. So roughly step 11, we would expect to have about 11 years of service. So someone right out of college would be early 30s probably. But I wouldn't be surprised to still see a wide range, to your point of some different examples of how folks come about into the teaching career from different areas. So definitely over time, we would expect this, we would see some attrition. So the full 1,597, like you're saying, right, as we get to FY32 when the BA lane is overtaken, it's FY36 when the bachelor's plus 30 lane is overtaken. I don't think we would still be talking about 1,597. We would see that number reduce over time as we get out to that point. So FY36 is the year in which the bachelor's plus 30 lane is a little bit longer because it has those longevity steps. So it takes a little bit more time for those to be surpassed by the blue zombies or the blue bars as we've been talking about.
You're talking about from now till 36, till this would expire unless they, for whatever reason, left the system?
Or unless the board provided market scale adjustments at a faster clip. So instead of the assumption of 1% year-over-year, that if the board decided to do a larger MSA, it would raise that blue scale. And the blue scale would then overtake the static yellow scale much more quickly.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for next up, I think I've asked for this before on these exact slides, especially on the BA lane issue, is the distribution. I think it's important for us to know, are a vast majority of the people on step 19, you know, at 50 to 55? Or are they evenly distributed? So we understand what, I mean, that's a massive range. And I would posit, I mean, I'm, you know, throwing the marker down, I would posit that the vast majority of employees are at the top end of those ranges. And that it goes down to allow for us for flexibility on the southern end, but I don't know. And I don't want to posit unless I know. Can we go to the, oh shoot, I didn't write down, which one is the masters? Where do we have the masters? Can you advance a couple of slides?
Put it.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, back to the one with masters. The seven, there we go. So in your discussions, in your collaborative discussions, because this is the other struggle, is we're paying people for masters that are not necessarily in their, if you will, lane, if they're in their educational lane. So you could have a masters in logistics and be teaching, you know, high school English. And the correlation of your masters to enhancing the experience of a student in the classroom, the struggle I have is that we have teachers who are maybe 20-year veterans in the classroom. They wind up being mentors to a brand-new teacher who did, you know, a program that didn't exist back in the day and they did a 401. And they graduate with their masters and they're already in a different lane. And now you have an experienced teacher with a BS or VA now mentoring and you're teaching all the kids in the class the same material. And what are the different expectations that we're paying somebody for a masters that may or may not even be in the content area and you're paying them more? So I struggle that we're floating up that purple line artificially with a masters and pushing teachers who are mid or beyond mid-career to go pursue a masters. And I don't know what that difference that's going to make for the student in the classroom.
So I know that Kevin wants to talk about this and this whole notion of a masters. We wanted to keep our focus focused merely on a solution as it relates to the particular scale and the lanes, understanding that we would want to have further conversations about masters. That's why you saw that future collaborations would focus on this group coming back together to talk about masters and the impact of masters. So we didn't have discussions necessarily about that. We did talk about the possibility or looking at the numbers of, you know, trying to figure out the number of teachers that might go from a bachelor's to a masters and what the impact would be. And it's very hard to calculate that because it's hard to know what people are going to do and what kind of personal choices they're going to make. But I do know that Kevin wanted to talk a little bit more and understanding that we are going to take a look at this whole notion of masters down the road. We just didn't have enough time to do that and do it well in preparation for this work session.
It was one of the ideas that Tina had brought up in the work discussion group about the masters equivalency. And talking with FCPS about a program that could look into things that a teacher with a bachelor's might be able to accrue some credits to have a masters equivalency that focuses mainly on Fairfax County. So that if they were to get one of those, they wouldn't go to Loudon, they wouldn't go to Arlington or Alexandria because they're here in Fairfax locked in with a masters equivalency. So it's something that I know that we would be interested in discussing more with FCPS.
And any future group that we look at would look at the masters. And right now, we don't have rules or guidelines around whether or not that masters has a direct impact on what's happening in the classroom. But again, as we pull this group together, it's something that we would look at and certainly consider.
I mean, that's the crux of the matter, right? Is if you're able to show me that a teacher with a masters, regardless of what the content is, in English, that their students are learning at a better rate and are scoring higher on standardized tests, et cetera, et cetera, that would be the relevant analysis that would be meaningful to me. And then, does And then, is, does it matter? Does it matter if it's a masters in content area versus not? Is there a difference there? I like the concept, you're almost talking about like another pay lane, or another, like a, like a sliver or something to acknowledge experience. Because what I don't want to do, because in our, Dr. Brabran, in our, in our pursuit of a premier workforce, what you don't want to do is tell your seasoned, experienced veteran teachers, "By the way, I don't care that you're, you're doing your job well. I don't care that your students are excelling. You now are not equivalent, because somebody later than you, you know, was able to take advantage of a four-plus-one masters, you know, at the age of twenty or twenty-one, and now you're going to be their mentor, you're going to teach the same content area, you have all the same obligations, and you're a veteran member, but we're going to pay them more." There is something that I don't think we have quite right, and the question is, are there certain content areas? Like, do we want maybe our, you know, B.C. calculus teachers to have a masters? Or our STEM, I mean, are there certain areas where it makes more sense for us to focus? Because what I don't want to do is get to a point where, you know, you are artificially elevating everything in terms of the demands, plus the long-term implications, not only salary, but, you know, retirement. And I know this is kind of getting down in the weeds, but this has got to be the next critical part of the discussion, because of how many people are to the right in that, in those green and purple columns.
And we did have that, those conversations initially, thinking about the masters and what that would look like, and really built the scale so that it mimicked the market, and knowing that teachers compare our scales to other scales in the market. If we were vastly different than the market, then it might be difficult to try to explain to teachers how our scales are different, because people understand steps, they understand additional compensation for masters, for BA plus fifteen, thirty, masters, PhD, that's a common practice in education. So if we were to do something different, it would really be, there'd be a lot of communication around what that difference would look like, and a lot of education for not only our new teachers, but for our current staff, on what those differences meant for their compensation.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines.
First of all, I, I want to say how much I appreciate seeing this, the collaborative team in front of us here today. This is exactly what I believe our community would want, that FCPS is partnering with our associations, and really ensuring that, as you represent the largest number of our employees who are being affected by this, that your voices are at the table for about the fairness and equity. I will just ask before I comment further. So Dr. Brabran, is it coming from your team, as a, from the working group, that it's being recommended that we go with step eleven and above? No?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So a couple of things. First of all, when you look at, I think it's slide eleven on my thing, where it was that costing, I guess it's in front of us here, you know, you look at the cumulative cost is forty million dollars. It's over nineteen years, so it's really two-point-one million annually. And I think at minimum, with a three-billion-dollar-a-year operating budget, we owe it to our teachers to put aside that two-point-one million in honor of those who, who began their work here from step eleven and above, and saying, you know, you may be at a point in your career where there isn't a reason or a need for you to go get your master's degree, and the cost and the return on investment isn't there. So I, I'm very much in favor of going at the step eleven. So what Ms. Schultz said, and this is kind of, again, something we've brought up in prior work sessions about this whole issue of master's degree. You know, on the one hand, there's a lot that you gain in your master's level education, and, and hopefully, it's, it does include some things like doing more research and, and understanding then how you incorporate that into your instruction. But I do worry very much that this pressure on some of our most dedicated teachers who might arrive here in this division with a bachelor's, they didn't do the four-one, as Ms. Schultz was describing, but they are dynamic and remarkable teachers. And yet, as I understand it, for the master's degree, it doesn't have to be in your area of specialty. Someone made the joke to me, it could be in basket weaving, and you'd still end up getting the master's degree, you know, additional compensation. And so I do think that at some point, this board and this division needs to have a deeper conversation, that as we went to mirror the market, it doesn't mean we're sheep and that we follow the sheep. So if it turns out that other school divisions aren't thinking deeply about the value add that the masters brings, I'd like to see that we somehow say, "The master's degree has to be serving a purpose of some kind," so that, I, I think it just garners respect. And also, I want to make sure that we, for teachers who are teaching full-time, pursuing master's degree on the outside, I want them to pursue a meaningful masters. I don't want them to just literally find out, "What is the easiest thing I can take, so I can just move over into the masters lane?" Because trying to teach full-time and then do graduate work is very draining. And my son experienced a teacher doing that, and she was not the same teacher. And that's just a reality for those teachers. And so I'm thinking about not just our employees, who I want teachers to go home, and I want you to recharge your batteries, I want you to have time with your families, and I want you to be excited about the next school day. But if you're trying to get a master's degree, because we've created conditions that just say a master's by any means, then we're actually hurting education. I still think that in the work that you all did, breaking it out, not just by the market average swirled together like paint colors that, you know, you then can't see the individual color that you started with, I've brought up the fact that Loudoun County and Prince William County are not so driven on a master's scale. They, they do have a defined bachelor's scale, and they're the two largest divisions right next to us. And if we have young people with bachelor's degrees moving to this area, and they look at Fairfax County and say, "Well, Fairfax County doesn't value my bachelor's degree," they're going to move and live in Loudoun and Prince William. And we might be missing out on some phenomenal bachelor's-level teachers, because we've followed, you know, again, what we said is, okay, well, it's about the market, but frankly, what I saw part of the market influence is what Arlington's doing. Well, we're market, but this was even beforehand. So I know that's kind of a parking lot parallel issue here, but I, I did want the, the working group to know. And I guess I can just ask you real quick, did you guys look at Loudoun scale by itself, and Prince William scale by itself, to help inform you in realizing that not everybody's going, masters is, you know, where it is? Or did you not have it disaggregated by districts?
So we didn't disaggregate it by districts. We did provide that information as part of a follow-up for the board. We really tried to just focus on how we could provide solutions for these teachers outside of the masters lens.
I'm sorry, because I know I'm going to get cut off, so let me just make sure you understood my question. What I'm saying is the bachelor scale. Since we were trying to solve the bachelor scale issue in Fairfax County, the bachelor's scale for Prince William, the bachelor's scale for Loudoun goes higher. It goes higher. And so that's what my whole point of those going into detail is, if, did that help inform this work? Or did the working group not see that, in fact, Loudoun and Prince William will reward bachelor-level teachers much higher into their careers?
No, we didn't do a review of the individual scales as part of our work. We were really focused on how to ensure that our bachelor's teachers would be able to move through with the original promise that they were going to receive in that FY seventeen scale,
Right.
and how we get them to that point. So I think that as we look at any further work around masters, masters equivalencies, it's looking at those other scales. But part of that was already done when we developed the original overall scale. This was really to create that permanent solution for our teachers, you know, based on where they were on this scale, and how we could align them to the scale that they would have been on.
Thank you. And so just to make sure, and then I'll move on, let my other colleagues have their opportunities. So the way this grandfathering works, looking at this, let's see, where it showed, how people will progress. There's, it's the matrix chart that Ms. Schultz was complimenting. I guess it's, yeah, that one there. So I had Ms. Corbett-Sanders saying in the background to me that, as of now, teachers in our system, not the grandfathered, which is about ten and a half percent of our total population of teachers that's in this group, but the other twenty-five, almost twenty-six hundred teachers who are at a bachelor's level of some kind, they will be stopping at step twenty-three. Is that correct?
No, they would be stepping, they would stop at step nineteen, with the idea being that once they get there, the redesign scale, the range of the redesign scale is already exceeding anything that previously existed on that FY seventeen scale. So that's step nineteen in the future years on the redesign scale will be more than the steps twenty through twenty-three, or any of those longevity steps at that point.
Okay, so I guess I, I'll just leave it with this, that I do appreciate that we're trying to hold harmless those who were in our system from step eleven onward. And, and so the short-term solution and what you brought to the table, I am very supportive of. But I would like to hear from my colleagues if we feel like this is something that we may have to have a future work session on in terms of stopping our bachelor's step at twenty? Because, again, to not look at what Loudoun's bachelor's scale is, and what Prince William's, and it's the two largest jurisdictions surrounding us, I just want us to have eyes wide open that people moving to this area, and we have a lot of military, we have a lot of their State Department and government families, will they be choosing to move and live in the other two counties? Because we, we have a bachelor's level that just doesn't compensate after year, or after that step twen- step nineteen, and I'm not sure that's in our best interest as a division. Oh, and then finally, one of the things that, when we do this whole cost-benefit analysis, I don't know if it's here for another time, but I still haven't seen that as we drive everybody toward master's degrees, and what that's going to cost for our, our salary, our, our overall salary expenditures, I mean, it's kind of like, oh, this is, this is great what we're doing. Well, again, proving that the masters makes you a better teacher, and then the cost to the system, I think there's a lot more questions than answers still. But Dr. Brabran, as a glow, I really want to compliment you and your team. This is probably the best information I could have hoped to see for today.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I have Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. McElveen.
Well, thank you so much for, I think it's, it's wonderful, the collaborative effort that went into coming up with your proposal, and I think that this can serve as a, as a model for future issues that we have before us. So congratulations to everybody who put so much work into this. I have a couple of clarifying questions, and then a couple of comments. Am I understanding that the way you determined step eleven was you did the math and said that those currently on step eleven, that that was the breakpoint, that those below that are gaining overall from the new scale, and those at eleven and above would overall, over the course of a career, they would lose from the new scale? Is that how you determined this?
Correct. Essentially, so this is kind of what we're trying to show with the green line here, is step eleven and higher, so everything above the green line, as they progress, would see a benefit to accessing the grandfathered scale of those gold bars. You're right. With the one percent MSA applied annually, with that assumption, everyone below the green line, as they progress through their steps, is just remaining on the redesign scale of those dark blue bars going forward.
So those at step ele- currently at step eleven, if they, if they just stayed on the current scale without being grandfathered in, they would actually lose by the new scale versus the old scale, is that correct?
They would. In this case, for step eleven, they're just losing at this last step here, is where they kind of just touch the grandfathered lanes before continuing on with the blue, but higher. You know, if you started here, and we're step, kept at nineteen, which is really the top of the blue bars, you're missing out on all this area with the gold shaded bars and the yellow shaded bars, because we're allowing them to access up to the higher steps.
So again, you'd be there on, at step nineteen, and prior to us making this recommendation, you were at step nineteen and you were frozen. What we're saying now is that, once you hit step nineteen, if you're at step eleven and above, once you hit step nineteen, you would step into that yellow grandfathered area, and you would be able to move through the scales and, and be at the top of that scale until the blue scale caught back up with your salary.
I, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out where that cutoff, how that cutoff was determined. And I, I think I understand you to say that those, those ten and below are gaining by the new scale. I mean, I understand that if we do this, that, that everybody at step eleven and above is going to, they're going to gain a lot.
And, and ten and below are gaining by the new scale, because when we redesigned the scales, and based on the feedback we had from teachers, is that they wanted those dollars earlier in their set, in their career.
Right.
And so as we built the scales, we put more money into the scale at the lower end of the scale. So we're adding more money to the scales earlier in the career. So those teachers who are in the first part of the, the scale of the one through ten, they've had much more money put into the scale. So they're going to benefit over time at a much greater rate, or a much higher rate, than those teachers who miss out on those earlier dollars.
Right, and, and again, I, I do understand that, that dynamic. When we looked at the scales earlier in the summer, it looked like, it, it looked to, it looked like that cutoff might be higher. But I, I trust you, that you've done the math and determined that those that are currently at eleven and above actually are, are losing overall, so.
And I have to, I have to, when we talk about the collaboration, as everyone came to the table, folks around the table talked about that sweet spot. And so when we had talked about this earlier and brought this at the previous work session, we hadn't necessarily considered or thought about where that crossover point would be. And so based on those conversations, and then looking at where that crossover point would be, we were able to ascertain that it should be at that step eleven, because we were trying to figure out how far back we would go. But when you did the calculations on what was best for the employees, that step eleven ended up being the best point.
So going back to slide seven, where it says currently grandfathered, what, what are we talking about? Are the, the six hundred and forty-three, those are permanently grandfathered currently?
Grandfathered in that, two years ago, they had salaries that were already above what the new step nineteen was. So they were already on step twenty through twenty-three, or on those longevity steps for the bachelor's plus thirty lane. So they've already been on twenty or higher, and with the two step increases the past two years for grandfathered employees, we've allowed them to go from step twenty to twenty-one, twenty-one to twenty-two, et cetera.
But those that were on, say, twenty, they weren't, they weren't until now told they could go up to twenty-three, were they?
Right, because those that we had in the grandfathered status initially, our thinking was that they would remain where they were. And so we've addressed it the past two years, go ahead and authorize step increases for those individuals.
So they were grandfathered, they were, they've been grandfathered, but now they're going to get more grandfathering, is that correct?
Yes, so, so the, we, essentially, because of the actions of the board, we've had no employees experience a freeze based on the new scale implementation. It was designed so that when you hit step nineteen, you would hang there and, and stay there.
Right.
And so because, for the past two years, the board has directed us to allow those individuals to step, they're already in a grandfathered status, they're already in the yellow portion of the scale. And so as they remain in that yellow portion of the scale, more individuals will join them, and they'll stay in that yellow portion until the blue scale catches up, and then they'll jump back over to the blue scale.
Okay. So will, is that to say that fifteen hundred and ninety-seven employees gained from this proposal, or some lesser number?
No, I think that's an accurate portrayal. Fifteen ninety-seven, again, are going to access those steps, which previously we had not said they would have access to.
Okay, but there are some at step twenty-three that won't change, correct?
Correct. Those that are at the top of the scale would sit at that rate, and that's why, again, we asked for, the work group wanted consideration for bonuses for those at the max, because the market scale adjustments would be applied to the redesign scale, not to the grandfathered scale.
So, those at twenty-three would only gain if we provide a bonus in addition to?
Correct. Something else to kind of provide to them.
And Michael, is it true, just because of where Ms. Evans is going, we have provided bonuses for those grandfathered for what, the last two years?
The last two years, yes. You're correct.
Okay. All right. So, there are some that wouldn't benefit from purely the grandfathering, but it assumes a bonus for those at the top. All right. So, I mean, we clearly did cut off this BA scale too abruptly. I think we all realize that we need to do something to deal with the fact that we, this wasn't right at the top end of the scale. To the points that have been made, and I see Ms. McLaughlin is either left or not in the room right now. But as far as the BA scale versus the master's degree scale, I see where she's heading, saying that when they get to nineteen then, you know, they will be at the end. They will be at seventy-seven thousand versus eighty-seven, or whatever it is by that time. So, I see her point about whether we want to do something about that. We do, I guess, have nine years though, because it'll be nine years before the step ten are at step nineteen. So, that does give us a little time to consider whether nineteen at the end of the day is just too low for our BA scale. Well, again, just one other question, which is, the cost, does the cost include the increased cost for benefits as well?
I'll let Ms. Burden weigh in on the calculations.
Yes.
It does.
It does include the benefits.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. McElveen followed by Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you.
I apologize. Ms. Hines, if I can have you go first, and then Mr. McElveen, I apologize.
I thought Ms. Strauss said I was after Ms. Evans. Did I miss here? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Okay, thank you very much. So, we've been saying several times tonight that this all assumes a one percent MSA, right? And I think I heard people say that if there's more than a one percent MSA, this doesn't have to be done. So, I wanted to get clarity on that. And also, what if, for some reason, we have just a terrible budget year and we have less than a one percent MSA? What does that do to our efforts at equity for our BA lane teachers?
So, I will let Ms. Burden talk about what some of those differences are as it relates to the dollars. But what I can say is that we base this on the one percent year over year. And you're exactly right. If the board chooses to provide a larger MSA, then we would get that blue scale moved up much more quickly than what we've built in. And we've built in the one percent simply as looking at the MSAs that we've provided over time in the past and looking at trend and then trying to figure where the board might go. And so, the one percent was a good average that we could possibly anticipate the board doing or future boards doing, knowing that they could go above that or below that.
Mr. Smith is absolutely correct. If we gave less than a one percent MSA, as our assumption, then it would take longer to get there and it would cost more. And if we gave more than a one percent MSA, we would get there faster and it would cost less.
So, when we say get there, we mean?
The break-even point.
Balance this. Okay. Get to the break-even point for our BA lane folks for the other, okay.
For those individuals who are on the grandfathered scales who are waiting for that train to catch up to them, that the blue scales would catch up to them much more quickly.
Okay, I see. So, it's not that we can only do this if we have a one percent MSA. It's just that the speed, the rate at which it happens is assumed for this model to be one percent. Okay, either way, we do it, right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, slide eleven, then, I'm sorry, on slide eleven, what we're hearing is it's going from step eleven above is the recommended approach, right? And it, at least it starts out at, you know, zero point eight million dollars a year, no matter which option we start at, right? So, the downside of doing, going from step eleven forward rather than step fourteen forward, I mean, what's the downside? Is just the total cost over time? That's the only downside?
Right. The cumulative cost is nine hundred thousand more. It's thirty-nine one from step fourteen to forty million from step eleven.
Okay. So, that's only, that's just the?
And you may also, I mean, if you went to step fourteen or higher, step sixteen higher, you'd also have those employees between step eleven and fourteen that maybe could benefit from accessing the grandfathered lanes but are still sitting at step nineteen instead of jumping to steps twenty through twenty-three.
Right. No, I mean, I think I see the benefits for the employees. I'm just wondering, what's the trade-off for the budget? Is all I'm wondering. Yeah, but thank you. That's helpful.
And I would say in future budgets, it's all speculation on my part, but if you have individuals in that step eleven to step fourteen range, they may try to pursue their masters a lot faster and then it may cost you more in the long run.
You're right. There are incentives working here, right, that would change this maybe, right? Finally, Mr. Smith, you said something at the beginning, and maybe I misheard, about that not everyone will be held harmless by this. Did I misunderstand you? Or is this step eleven forward model, does it actually hold everyone harmless and nobody slips through?
So, the answer is yes. And so, when I was talking about those individuals who are currently at the top of the scale. So, if you're at the top of the scale, there's no more room for you to move through the scale. You wouldn't be progressing through because you've already hit the top. And unless the board would provide some type of bonus for those employees at the top, then those individuals would not be fully held harmless. And so, that's why I said it that way. So, I want to be very careful in how I said it because when people listen to the work session, I wouldn't want them saying, but Marty Smith, you said that we were going to be made whole and it's that you will be allowed to progress through the grandfathered scale. And when you get to the top, you may not progress any further, but the board may then choose to do some type of bonus to give you an additional salary.
Okay. Can I just frame that for a second? I think just the distinction, even if we had done nothing, that would have been the end of the scale, right? Part of it is the scale changed and people lost an opportunity to go through a scale that those folks did get an opportunity to do. I don't know if that makes sense. It's there at the end, there was no, that was the end of the scale. If we had done nothing, that was the end of the scale. And we've been giving bonuses for the last couple of years for folks that have been at the end of all the scales or just the grandfathered.
So, we allow, so for the individuals who are grandfathered, we've allowed them to move through as they normally would. But for those who we've been giving bonuses to, it's for those individuals who are not going to receive any type of step or MSA.
That's it.
I think, to be clear, we've heard from a lot of employees who are at the top of those scales that the bonus isn't necessarily the best thing because it's not adding to their retirement years. So, one of the things we are hearing is that one issue of, if the system were to decide to do an MSA anyway, they would see that increase to their overall pay for their retirement years. So, we have, there's not that many of them, but there are more than a few who are at the very top, who are only experiencing those bonuses. And we would say that an MSA, it's always been my argument, is beneficial to their retirement. So, we are hearing that.
Right. So, even if they're not getting a step, they're frozen on steps, they get the MSA, which goes into their base salaries, which you're talking about, yeah.
And they won't with this redesign.
With this redesign. Okay.
And if you, and with that, and we could certainly have more conversations about it, to provide the MSA for the grandfathered area would continually move the top of that grandfathered scale up. So, then it would take, the blue train would take a little bit longer to overtake because we would continually move the top of that scale up. So, it's, there are certainly discussions to be had at future budget meetings as we think about what happens to those individuals who are at the top of this scale and possibly at the top of any other scale where they wouldn't be receiving any kind of MSA or step.
So, just to be clear, sorry, and then I'll stop. We're talking about folks at step twenty-three and twenty-four? Yeah, I think I'm on seven there, right? We're talking about folks at step twenty-three and twenty-four because after that is longevity.
Correct. So, it's the three different lanes, for the BA and BA plus fifteen lane, you're talking about step twenty-three for the BA plus thirty lane. That's twenty-five on the third longevity step there at the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, and I apologize. Mr. McElveen followed by Ms. Palchuk and Mr. Moon.
Thank you. So, you know, I view these, this pair of work sessions here as correcting past mistakes. And yes, Superintendent Bray Brandon, I will give it to you that this was before your time. And certainly, it was something that so many of us on the board did not realize was happening, you know, on both these fronts. And very frustrating to us. But I will tell you that seeing the group before us today definitely leaves me very hopeful in this. And so, you know, that's, seeing this group assembled before us is really all I need to know in making the determination that this is a good proposal, it's gone through significant vetting and hopefully does fix those past mistakes on this front. So, thank you all for your work, to Marty and Scott for putting forth this effort.
Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. I echo many of the sentiments and I'm just very delighted that this is true collaboration. I think I've heard from many of our employer association presidents that, you know, you felt that you really truly had a voice, so I appreciate that. I know some of us had really wanted us to start at step ten, so I'm very happy that we got as low as step eleven and that it really is, it's less than a million dollars for the first year. I guess we don't have the breakdown for the following years. I have a couple of questions to clarify, following Ms. Hines' question especially. So, my understanding, and maybe we're separating grandfathered versus non-grandfathered, is that we were doing the one percent bonus for people at the top of the scale who were seeing no increase because in a couple of years, when we got to our implementation of our new scales, they would then start to see those MSAs. Is that not correct? That once we finalize the scale, they would see that MSA?
The redesigned teacher scale, you mean, finalize that? Yes. So, once that's, once it is now and once it's implemented, it's continuing to receive the benefit of the MSA. And that's what moves the blue bars up over time is the one percent MSA and that assumption being applied to it annually. Yes, going forward, the active scales that have been implemented get the benefit of the market scale adjustments.
But even people at the top of the scale?
Like step, so you mean like step nineteen on the redesign scale? Correct. They would still get, yes, they would see the benefit of the one percent market scale adjustment. They would.
Right. So, it's just on the, what you're saying, it's on the grandfather scale that we would not see the MSA?
Correct.
But people on the new scale, when they reach the top, whether it's on the BA or the MA, they will receive the MSA adjustment?
Yes.
Once we finalized the new scales? And it's getting very complex.
Once the new scales are fully implemented, then anyone, so we wouldn't be giving these targeted increases for individuals who are further away from the market. We would all be where we needed to be. And then, once the board provided some kind of MSA, the entire group, all of our teachers would get that MSA if you're on the non-grandfathered scale.
Regardless of where you are on that scale?
Yes. It's for the individuals who are on the grandfathered scale, who were above market, where we allowed them to continue on to where they would have been in FY seventeen. It's those teachers at the top of the scale who would not receive any type of market scale adjustment. And so, the only increases that they might receive would be bonuses from the board. At this time, that's a recommendation. And of course, we could look at other remedies for those individuals at the top of the scale. But at this time, based on what the board has done in the past, we're recommending that bonus.
Could I ask that we get a cost out of what it would take to implement that? To go, rather than assuming a one percent, assuming an MSA for the grandfather scale opposed to the one percent? I mean, if it's, just to get a sense of what that costs would be?
Yeah, certainly. You can ask whatever you like, Ms. Palchuk. And we will see if we can, if we can get the, we'll see if we can get the answer for you. And with that, we'll also show what that, what the adjusted scale would look like when those scales would overtake. Because I'm thinking that we might see a longer horizon then because if you're going to continually raise the top of that yellow line, then it's the blue line, it's going to take a little bit longer for that blue line. Unless, if they're equal, then they might still overtake at the same time, but we would want to calculate that.
You're starting to sound like Zombie Land.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so that, I guess, that, and maybe, you know, just it looks like something we absolutely cannot do. It looks like something, oh, really, it's very feasible. So, if we can, I would love to see that. So, I'm definitely committed to this. I'm very excited about this. Would like to hear more feedback maybe from our associations as well. I guess my other question is continuing to study the question that's being raised and that's kind of a larger question of people now on the new scale and what that means and what we're valuing. I know we've had conversations in the past looking at things like dual certification, board certification and other areas. I know there's been some conversation and perhaps it's pursuing the idea of the BA plus lane being, I think we used to have it more of a hybrid, if I'm not mistaken. But starting to look at what if we do create more of a hybrid? Because at the plus thirty, you're already close to an MA. Plus fifteen, you're halfway there. But more of what we're really needing, because we know there are areas of high need and areas like our, unless the state changes it, elementary immersion, teachers need to be duly certified, you know, and looking for those hard-to-fill positions. So, I know we always talk about talking about it. And maybe now that we've done this, I would appreciate if we could start to explore the next step of what are our plans for our long-term lanes. I guess beyond that, and I know, yes.
I was just going to say that the masters cohorts that have been taken advantage of are putting people into masters programs that we believe will be beneficial to FCPs. They're facilitated through Mason and they are putting our teachers through a program that we believe will be beneficial to FCPs. And I know too, to the comment before about masters being gotten in basket weaving, I would say most of our educators are getting their masters in something that they believe will be useful to themselves in the classroom. But it is true that you can get your masters in anything you choose, so. But that the ones we are working teachers through right now with the cohorts should be very beneficial to our students.
And I don't know if some of our FCFT or AFPE, if you have some input on that?
My only other comment would be some of the comments that Ms. McLaughlin made. And in consideration of the master's degree, you'd almost have to go back and redo the compensation study in order to, and I brought this up several times, to weight the jurisdictions that we really feel like we're competing against. But for a long time now, I've heard a lot of people in FCPs say, no, we're happy with the way the compensation study was done and we're confident in what it told us to do in terms of pay scales. So, some of the things, some of the questions that are arising now makes me think you want to go back and redo the study and that's going to be a lot of work. So, not that those questions shouldn't be asked, they are.
But, so, can I assume that you're saying that overall, you feel that the direction we're moving is a positive?
If you can be okay with the way the compensation study was done, if you accept that that's what we're going with, then I am fully behind this proposal. You'd have to redo the whole study for me to be someplace else. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I've been hearing from my members and there are pockets of people who are not being held without harms and that's concerning to me. And when we clearly make a definition of something, it's concerning if there are people who are not being included in that. So, as we're looking at this, I want to make sure that we have integrity with this as well. I see a sign over here asking to be fair to our teachers on the BA lanes. And I believe this process is doing that, is including that. And I love to see the progress that we're making. I still feel like we're not quite there yet. I think looking at our compensation study to see where we are, if it's I think looking at our compensation study to see where we are, if it's true, exactly where we are, and looking at, listening to comments from our school board as well, it seems to me there's still some questions on it. The question about a concern where someone having a BA versus a master's degree is, if there is a difference in the quality of that teacher. I think the master's equivalency can help with some of that as well, and investing in our teachers. We can do whatever we want here in Fairfax County. We can create a great system designed for our teachers to build them up, so that there is no, teachers on the, the newer teachers coming in versus our seasoned teachers. We can find a way to work together to make sure those partnerships are outstanding, and we can do it here in-house. We can do something for our teachers who are close to retirement, so that they feel valued, and that they are being beneficial to those new teachers as well, which they already are. They are mentors, they are leads, those are the teachers, those seasoned teachers who step up and take charge, take control, and help us to be an outstanding school district. We need to make sure we're doing something in-house to take care of them.
Thank you. So, I just want to finish up and say I support that and the two future collaborations, tuition reimbursement, master's equivalency, I hope they're as productive as this one. And then finally, Dr. Nixon, I hope you can help us. This is a very complicated thing to communicate. So, I know as one board member, I, I would like to, A, see how I can better communicate it to teachers, and to see how, what your, your department's goal will be, and give us, I guess, updates on that.
Right. So, Mr. Hickerson and Ms. Williams are both on a calendar meeting with myself, and certainly these are things that we'll be talking about. A communication plan is going to be critical. When we do future studies on the master's equivalency and tuition reimbursement, those things will be on the docket as well. So, eager to start having those conversations, and then dependent on, you know, what the next steps are as a result of this study, then a very important communication plan. We'll need to go out, working with our communications team, and certainly with Mr. Smith and the rest of my team in HR, to make sure that it's, obviously, there, there are a lot of questions that came up as a result of what we heard today, so we want to make sure that it's very clear, it's easy to follow. We know there's certainly going to be many questions, so having an FAQ, or having some anticipatory thinking around, what are those questions that came up today that we know our, our membership are going to have, and how to best go about answering those? So, creating whatever documentation we need, and whatever communication and flow plan we need to make sure that it is concise, it is clear, and that people know who, who to call and/or email when they have those questions.
I appreciate that. So, I guess I have a lot of next steps, an update, once that is more formalized would be helpful.
And we can also add that we've had our communications office with us lockstep from the beginning, and so we've already been developing some communications that can go out, once the board makes a decision moving forward. We have that ready to go, we've got it across multiple communications platforms, and so looking at the way teachers best get that information. So, we will be working very closely with HR and our communications office to get the message out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions to ask. I missed a part of the meeting, and if my questions had been asked by somebody else at that, during that time, please forgive me, because I didn't hear the answers, I'm going to ask those same questions again. MSA, I think that assumption may be made about one percent, is, is the MSA going to be applicable to FY seventeen salary scale as well? If you give MSA, that's going to affect that scale as well, or that's going to remain the same?
So, based on this recommendation, the MSA would not be applicable to the FY seventeen scale, so it would not be applicable to those individuals in the gold area.
Okay. The next question is, I think I sent in this question in advance over the weekend, that, that what is the maximum credit of experience we give to a new teacher in placing them on the steps?
We allow up to fifteen years of experience.
So, they could, so someone could come in as, in step number sixteen or fifteen?
Step fifteen.
Step fifteen. Someone could come in as step fifteen. So, let's say the next year, we do this, next year, somebody comes in as a step number fifteen, new employee, new employee fifteen. So, for that particular BA teacher, is that teacher going to stay on duly designed scale until step nineteen, and then the salary is going to remain flat, whereas other teachers who are longtime employees, who have been with us for fourteen, fifteen years, on same step number fifteen, and go up to nineteen on the new scale, and then switch to FY seventeen scale and move on? Is that, trying to see whether I am understanding your proposal correctly?
Correct. So, the recommendation is for teachers that are currently here now, step eleven and greater, to be able to advance to the FY seventeen grandfathered bachelor's lanes. So, to your question about a new teacher next year, that would be beyond the recommendation, and so they would remain on the redesigned scale through step nineteen going forward.
So, we picked a step number fifteen, which is the maximum credit. What if, since this is going to be, proposal is to start from step eleven, so we could have new teachers come in, step eleven, and stay with us for eight years, devoting their eight years of time, and then see their salary remain flat for the rest of their career with us, while their, many of their colleagues on the same step, spending same eight years, working hard with us, with them, then they go back to FY seventeen scale and start making more money? Is that what you're going to see on the disproposal?
Yes, although you're saying flat, and really, and again, with the assumption of the one percent MSA, the nineteen, the salary for step nineteen would not remain flat, it would still increase, but it would be different.
MSA.
With the MSA, but it would be different, you're right, from the FY seventeen, accessing the FY seventeen grandfathered BA lanes.
Don't you think that might potentially create problems years down the road, suddenly, suddenly teachers on the same steps going on to two different scales? Because we, when we give a credit to our teachers for their years of experience and so many others, because we value their experience and so many others, that is why we giving them credit and placing them in certain step. But after a certain point, they're going to take a difference, different route in terms of earning, earning capabilities concerned. So, there's a differential treatment of these teachers on the same steps.
So, we would have to take a look at the number of teachers that we'd be talking about. I, I don't know off the top of my head how many teachers we would have coming in, and, and what that number would be. We could certainly take a look at that to see what the impact would be. And I know that Becca had a comment.
I think that in order to take advantage of the grandfathered FY seventeen snapshot, you should have been in employment at that time. And if we are advertising and hiring new teachers based on that new scale, I don't have a problem telling my members that you weren't here in FY seventeen, so you can't revert back to FY seventeen. You've chosen, you're looking at joining employment with FCPS under this new scale and this new system, so you need to come on board and ride it to the end. If you'd wanted to be on the FY seventeen scale, you should have accepted a job in FY seventeen earlier. Yeah.
Thank you. I still would like to have those numbers.
We can do that.
Anything else, Mr. Moon?
For the time being, those are all the questions I have.
Okay. So, I do have a couple of questions, and I'll take, oh, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
I'm happy to wait.
No, please, go ahead.
I wanted to say that I felt that the process that got us to here today was very collaborative. I felt, I felt very good about it. I felt that both sides entered into it with a positive spirit, and trying to make the best answers available with what we had. So, I'm happy with that, but I'm not satisfied in, in a couple of areas. First of all, we should acknowledge that steps don't always equal years of service, and that we have teachers in the system, some of whom had salaries that were frozen for up to three years, is my understanding. So, one, two, or three years of frozen step and salary. So, that has affected them up to now for those three years, but will affect them for the rest of their lives, including their retirements. And as far as I know, there's, there's been no effort or even serious conversation about an effort to make them whole for that. I don't, I'm not trying to throw an idea on the table, but I think it's worth discussing. How can we help make them up for the years of salary that they lost? Secondly, some of our most veteran and experienced teachers, who will see no raise for a long time under this new plan with this agreement, feel very unappreciated for that. And I think as more experienced veteran teachers find out about this new plan, even more will feel unappreciated. These are our most senior people who function as department heads, and team leads, and mentors, and all this sorts of thing. They're, we learned in our discussions that it's very inconsistent school to school as to whether these people are given us a lighter class load or more money. So, that's not consistent throughout FCPS. So, there's some significant hard feelings out there, and I think we're going to see more, from our most senior people who feel they are not being held harmless. Maybe I twisted that, but I think you get what I mean. They are being, they will feel that they're being harmed, and at the same time while being harmed, are being asked to do some of the most critical work that's done in the schools, mentoring our younger people, leading our departments, serving on the principal's advisory committees, you know, all that stuff. The third thing is, careers don't always last just thirty years. Imagine a twenty-two-year-old college graduate, are they going to retire at fifty-two? I mean, who can do that? Right? So, I think we need to not assume that, and not build that into our calculations, and assume that it's kind of open-ended. That leads me to echo Ms. McLaughlin's comments about the Loudon and Prince William's steps continuing beyond ours. I've said in the beginning in these discussions, excuse me, that I don't see any reason, and I haven't heard any reason, why the steps in the BA and BA fifteen lanes should stop before the steps in the BA thirty and masters and above lanes stop. I don't understand why we have a different step limit for the BA and BA fifteen lanes. It doesn't make any sense to me, and I, and I've never heard even an attempt to explain why that's there. And lastly, and I know this is perhaps the most radical thing I mentioned, is I think steps for everybody should continue through retirement. I don't think there should be a top. I think it should keep going up every year until you retire. That's what I have for now. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'm very glad that I allowed you to speak first, because you addressed something that I was most concerned about. When we brought this back to Dr. Bragbrand and his team, the concern that I had expressed at the time was the upper level, the twenties and above, in particular, the twenty-three and above, where they are a cohort that not once, but I think three times, had their steps frozen in the course of their careers. And so, we had actually asked, as a follow-up, to do a deep dive on that, and that when we turned this project over, we had set fifteen as the step level, because we had been told that below that, there had already been infusions of, of salary enhancements for the eleven to fifteen. So, I fully support the eleven to fifteen, and what we're doing here, it makes sense, but I continue to be concerned, and I would like to have a next step, on how we make whole those at the upper end of the scale, because the market study was based on a market average at a fixed point in time. This talks about career earnings over time, and what we don't address by not addressing the, the more senior staff, is how freezing their salaries multiple times in their career has impacted their lifetime earnings over time. And so, I would, as a next step, go back to the next step we asked for before in looking at that more senior, those more senior scales. And so, I don't care if you do it from the context of looking at Loudon and Prince William County, or if we look at it from the context of those employees that had their salaries frozen multiple times. I also think that it would be important for us to see the budget projections over time versus just, it's eight hundred, eight hundred million this year, and the total is up to forty million over nineteen years. I think we need to see how much of a budget hit it's going to be year over year, or what the projection is, just because I think it's helpful. And then I would just like to say that by addressing the eleven to fifteen, what we actually have done is we've gone back on what we had initially been hearing, which was that by not addressing the eleven to fifteen, we were encouraging that cohort to go off and get their masters. And by correcting that, that decision from a few years ago, what we're actually saying is we do value the bachelor's as a important role, and those teachers that only have a bachelor's as being valued employees, and employees that are contributing greatly to our system. So, I am very appreciative that we have corrected that misnomer of the past, but I do still want us to go back and sharpen our pencils and look at what we've done to those more senior employees.
And we will provide the breakdown for you for what those annual costs would be. As you build those dollars into the base, what I can tell you is that there would be no increase from one year to the next that would be any more than the eight hundred thousand dollars. So, we won't see a point where the, the cost will increase above that for one year over the next. As you think about the base, those costs will be cumulative, so you'll see, and that's where the increased costs come into play, because as, as it goes into the base...
That's what I presumed, but I wasn't sure that everybody understood that it's eight hundred in year one, possibly one point six in year two.
As the cumulative cost, but once it's in the base, it will never be any more than eight hundred thousand dollars of new money or additional money. But we can get that, we can certainly provide that. We have that information, we'll, we'll add that as a next step.
Excellent, thank you. And with that, given that it is six twenty, and I know we have people who have to leave promptly at seven, if we could put the next steps up on this, and then go to the next part of our presentation, which is the substitute pay. So, all those in favor of the first one?
If anybody doesn't know what that is, I'll explain to you offline.
For you? Oh. I didn't, nobody told me that. Okay. So, we're all fine with the first one? Okay. And the second one?
Just progression to what? I don't understand, what is that?
I, I think my question was around, so if we're doing one percent bonus versus MSA, was that question, because I think we were, I was trying to get clarity on...
I thought you, I thought someone was asking about applying an MSA to that grandfathered portion of the scale.
Right.
The question, I guess, is what, is there MSA in particular you want to see?
The question, I guess, is what, is there MSA in particular you want to see, 1.5%? To show you how that changes the pace of the blue bars catching up to the yellow bars in that other graph, or the other chart.
Right. So I mean-
If you pick one, then we can extrapolate half or one and a half.
Yeah, I mean, I think one is generally what we're using.
Let's do, if I cost 1% MSA and then-
To the grandfather scale, right.
We can show you.
Perfect. Excellent.
We could do a 0.5 and a 1 so that you could see what those costs were. Those individuals would receive more money and would slow down the progression so that they wouldn't, so that the scale could eventually catch up to them.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Ms. Paojic, are you okay with the next one?
Yeah, that sounds good, if that makes sense to Dr. Nixon. Okay.
All those in favor? Okay. The next one, I'm fine with that. Can I see a show of hands for seeing what it would cost to make whole?
Number four.
Okay, that's fine. And five.
Yes, we were, we were going to ask for that clarification of making whole. Is it to 27, FY17? Is it?
It's essentially addressing that-
Holding harmless?
Yeah, holding harmless. To find out, you know, we know that they were frozen multiple times. And so if they had been, you know, how do we address that piece?
To look at, so, to look at the, the past issues on the scale, if we look at that group of employees, it's not just that group of employees, we would have to look at the entire scale. Because during that, any time that BA lanes were frozen, the rest of the scale was frozen too.
I understand that, Mr. Smith, but the difference is that's a group that we haven't addressed at all, and we did do infusions of salary enhancements for everybody else. So it's, it's addressing the needs of that one group that has-
Just addressing the needs of, of that, that one group. Got it.
Thank you. And then showing annual budget projections over time versus?
You mean that we're still talking about what's added to the base per year?
Correct.
So, because we got the total cost.
So we have it coming out as 40 million over 19 years. What we'd like to know is, is 800,000 year one. Year two is-
We have the chart, we know exactly what that is, we can provide it.
Excellent, thank you. All those in favor? Great.
So Madam Chair, I have a question to ask. Are you intending on scheduling another follow-up work session before the budget presentation? If not, I, I would like to see the board's guidance to the superintendent and what to do with BA lane for his proposed budget?
I believe that we should give guidance to the superintendent to address this in his budget.
In, in that case, you know, I would like to propose that we, we direct the superintendent to incorporate into proposed budget funding needed for implementing grandfathering from step 11.
All those in favor? Okay, excellent. You know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I know we're losing two of our colleagues, and we're losing three? Okay. Folks, we do have to get through the substitute pay portion of this because we need to give budget guidance. And so if I can beg my colleagues to stay for a short amount of time to try to get through that, that would be greatly appreciated. This was supposed to go till seven. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I, I mean, when my, when my assistant showed me the invitation for Champions of Character and we had our work session, I mean, I had to reply no because I had a work session. And so the idea that we're not going to do our work because some of our colleagues did decide RSVP yes for a Board of Supervisors event, I'm just, I'm a little perplexed as to what's happened here. Because if you're telling me now we're not going to finish our work session-
So Ms. McLaughlin, that's why I am suggesting let's try to spend a few minutes to deal with the substitute pay. And if we can do that, then those that have to leave, we do need to have a quorum of seven before, for us to be able to continue our work. And I'm begging my colleagues to please stay for that period.
So the strategic plan has been eliminated off tonight.
Yes, ma'am, we did move that. Okay, so if we can go on to the substitute pay, that'd be great.
So we're just going to change directors here. We have some of the group who've, actually, it's the same group who provided input on the substitute pay. And I'm going to ask Ms. Burden if she would come to the table. Looks like she may have, oh, she's, okay. So we have staff who have other commitments as well. But we're going to go through rather quickly here to highlight the changes and the recommendations that we have for our substitutes. As we've talked about, we, we made some changes to the budget in the past where we had an impact on the retirees and our retired subs. And so we were asked to go back and see if we could create some solutions for those retired subs. We also know that as we talked about this at our last work session, that it was really a supply and demand issue. So we've broken out our presentation around supply and demand. And again, because of the time, we're going to go through the presentation rather quickly and highlight the, the highlights of the presentation, and then we'll get to the recommendations. And I'll have Mr. Sean McDonald walk us through the presentation, the highlights.
All right. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Braybrand. Mr. Smith did the preview of the agenda slide, so I'm going to jump just past that. Just one point that I like to make, though, is that the data that we're providing this evening covers full school years as opposed to truncated school years. Back in April, the data we provided covered September through February of each of the year, so this gives you a broader look across the entire year. All right, so back in April, we did present some information to the school board. At that time, the data showed that our supply of substitutes was down by 13%. Requests were up by 16%, and the overall fill rate was down by 5%. Although on average substitutes were working more days, the increase in the volume of requests outpaced the fills, resulting in a negative impact to our overall fill rates. Additionally, an observation was made that retirees were filling 5% fewer jobs than they had three years prior, or, I'm sorry, yes, three years prior. We used a very collaborative process to engage in the conversation, to really come up with some recommendations to move forward. Part of the collaborative process was to send a survey out to all FCPS teachers. We did have a response rate of 39%, so almost 6,000 teachers responded to the survey. We asked a variety of questions that related to the supply, the demand, and the quality of our pool. 88% of those who responded agreed that differentiating pay based upon retiree status would be an effective way to enhance the overall quality of our FCPS substitute pool. Additionally, those responded agreed that providing incentives to work on hard-to-fill days, particularly Fridays, would be an effective way to encourage substitutes to work more frequently. And 98% responded that FCPS should compensate teachers for unused sick leave when retiring. 69% indicated that might, or would likely rather, impact their leave usage behavior. This slide provides an overview of our five-year supply trend. As you can see, the supply has gone down year over year. Overall, the pool has decreased by 22% over the past five years. The decline of our retiree substitute group has outpaced the decline of our non-retiree group with a very significant drop happening between the 16, 17, 17, 18 school years. Several factors are likely influencing the size of the substitute pool. One factor likely impacting the depth of our pool is low unemployment. According to the U.S. Department of Labor's Bureau of Labor and Statistics, the national unemployment rate in September was 3.7%. The lowest it's been in over a decade. Locally, unemployment reports for August show that unemployment in Virginia is at 3% and Fairfax County is at 2.5%. In times of low unemployment, it can be difficult to recruit and retain individuals into temporary positions such as substitute teaching. Additionally, we're also hiring high-quality substitutes into our teaching roles and other roles across the division. Teacher absenteeism has both an instructional and budgetary impact. Research from the National Bureau of Economic Research indicates that when teachers are absent from the classroom for more than 10 days in a school year, there's a significant decrease in student learning outcomes. Plus, on average, FCPS spends between $23 and $28 million a year providing substitutes when instructional staff is absent. I would refer, ask you to please refer to Appendix A for usage data and budgetary impact, which is on Slide 17. This current slide with the next two should be considered in tandem. This current slide provides us with an overview of the fill rates by day of the week for the 17, 18 school year. The next slide will show a one-week snapshot of fill rates for the, September 24th, the week of September 24th, 2018. And the third slide will show fill rates for a five-year period. Looking at this slide, the takeaway is that our, our fill rate for the 17, 18 school year was 93% overall, and Fridays continue to be a concern. Here's our one-week snapshot from the week of September 24th, which was just a few weeks ago. Overall, the fill rate for that particular week was 90% with over 5,000 leave requests being submitted by teachers. The fill rate for that Friday was 84%. Both data points are falling below the averages even seen the year prior. This slide provides the overview of the five-year trend for substitute requests. Since 2013, 14, the total number of requests have increased by a total of 26,645, or 15%, while the overall fill rate has declined 6% for that same five-year period. Our substitutes are working more, so they have filled 11,674 more requests, but again, they're not working at a pace that's keeping up with the demand. This slide focuses on, once again, on the 2017, 2018 school year. Here you will find the total number of requests by type for each day of the week. A similar slide was shared with the board back in our April presentation. Once again, personal leave requests on Friday continue to be significantly higher than, significantly higher than other days of the week. When we look at a comparison to Wednesdays, personal leave requests are up by 190% on Fridays. When looking across the year, a slight increase in demand is observed on the days immediately preceding or immediately following school breaks and holidays. Once again, the five-year trend for leave by type. If you look in Appendix B, you'll find the numbers that correspond with these bars. Some takeaways from this slide, the number of professional development leave requests have taken a downward trend, so we're moving in the right direction there. The number of subs needed to fill vacant positions is now moving downward because of the, the efforts of increasing, or I'm sorry, our earlier timelines and our increased recruitment effort to fill classroom positions. During the 15, 16 school year, when the personal leave policy change implemented, or was implemented, allowing teachers to use five of their allocated sick leave days for personal reasons, there is a noted jump of 44% in personal leave use, and sick leave did remain fairly constant at that time. Here you'll find several proposed possible solutions to increase the supply of substitutes available to meet our needs. One would be to raise the short and long-term retiree pay levels close to the rates that we offered back in 2016. Information about the history of our rates going, dating back to fiscal year 2014 are outlined in Appendix C, which are Slides 19 and 20 of the presentation. And another suggestion, a recommendation, rather, is to raise the rate of pay on Fridays by $2 an hour to encourage more substitutes in the pool to work on the day where we have the greatest demand. And finally, providing a menu of options for principals of creative ways to cover classrooms on days when there are not enough substitutes available. This market comparison slide shows where FCP, current FCPS substitute rates fall compared with the primary market. Arlington, Alexandria, D.C. Public Schools, Falls Church, Loudon County, Manassas City, Montgomery County, and Prince George's County in Maryland, and Prince William County. FCPS substitute rates currently, currently lag our primary market competitors. With the proposed rate increases for our retiree subs, FCPS would lead the local market. It is estimated that we would be able to increase the number, if we are able to increase the number of retiree subs in the pool back to the levels they appeared in the pool in 2016, 2017, and those subs worked the same number of days on average that the, the retirees did at that point, we would see an approximate gain or increase of 2% to our fill rates. The added benefit is that we would have trained and experienced educators who are best positioned to engage students in meaningful instruction, providing that, that coverage. On this slide, you'll find some potential solutions that are designed to neat, address some of the demands. One, creating a communication plan to inform teachers on ways they can support the goal of reducing demand. Consider reimbursing employees who are in the ERFC 2001 Plan for unused sick leave, a strategy that not only decreases the impact of teacher absences on the instructional program, but also potentially saves the school division money. Four surrounding school divisions in our primary market are offering similar programs. Please refer to Appendix D on Slide 21 for that information. Consider creating a regulation where high users of sick leave require documentation of their illness. And continue to work to reduce the number of trainings on Mondays and Fridays when This slide provides a summary of the options that were offered in terms of solutions, both in the supply and demand side, and categorizes them into two categories. One that have very real budget impact and others that have no budget impact. The fiscal forecast does set aside a placeholder of $900,000 to implement the first two recommendations at the top of the slide.
And so with that, we are ready for questions. And you'll note that while we did have the $900,000 as part of the recommendation in this presentation, or in the fiscal forecast, we, the fiscal forecast came out all along before we had this presentation finished, so we weren't able to provide any additional costs in the fiscal forecast. And so there may be questions about why the recommendations that don't align with the fiscal forecast. It's because we weren't quite there yet. We were there with the, the 0.9 for the retirees, but we hadn't quite looked at the costing for the rest of the recommendations.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. Appreciate the excellent report. I will be brief. Clearly, when we cut back on substitute pay, that was during a time of a lot of budget cutbacks. You know, this wasn't something that we had, had wanted to do or thought it was a good thing to do. We were kind of in a box and, and we did, we did this when we, we really did not want to. So I think now it's time to restore, you know, what we had to cut back then. So if we go to 15, I, well, you already had 15, great. I will say I can enthusiastically support the leave buyback. That seems to me like it's a win-win. We, some of our teachers can get a little bit more pay and will keep the teacher in the classroom. So I think that's a great idea. I certainly support increasing the rates for the long-term retirees, for the long-term subs who are retirees. I think that that's good to, to get us back to being competitive, and also for the short-term retiree rates. I'm more reluctant on the, the $2 an hour differential for Fridays. I, I'm not sure that we, we would, I understand that we have a particular problem with Fridays, but I guess I would like to first try encouraging fewer people to take Fridays off and also seeing how the other three work before we, we go to that kind of a differential. So, and I totally support all the, the non-budget- So, and I totally support all the, the non-budgetary items. So that's where I am on this. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Thank you. So just a couple of things. A question. Do we have SAC teachers still subbing in the buildings? I know that was done for a while, that there would be one SAC teacher who was available to sub in the building. Are we doing that anymore?
I'm not aware of that. We can certainly look into that. I don't know if that's a practice that has gone by the wayside, but I'm not aware of having SAC teachers subbing in buildings, but we can certainly look into that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I do remember that from just a few years ago, and I thought it was, I, I could be wrong. But that's a possibility, you know, to have the county pay for a sub. It's a permanent sub. And you know, so in Arlington, there's a permanent sub in, in the building. They pay for that, right? So it's only one person, you know, it makes a dent. The, yeah, the $2 extra on Friday, that's a big ticket item. That's 0.6 million. And I'm, I don't know, I'm not convinced. It seems like a little bit of throwing spaghetti at the wall. I'm not sure it's going to make a difference, right? And it's kind of expensive. I mean, unless we have some reason to think there'll be a good outcome.
Well, as we looked at the, the responses from our teacher survey and wanting to provide some kind of an option that aligned with those top vote-getters, so to speak, we wanted to make sure that we had something to address, and so that our teachers understand that when we ask them for input, that we actually use that input to develop recommendations. And so that is something that, we provided this for the board so that they could see what a $2 increase would be. It could be no increase. It could be somewhere between the zero and two. But really, it's to ensure that our teachers understood that we were listening to them and that we heard them, and that we wanted to provide some type of recommendation tied to. I, I think one of the other things, as we shared, it was the same work group who did the BA lane to provide an input on this, and a lot of the feedback was, oh, we, we didn't realize. If we'd just known that there was an impact of subs, we could monitor that on our own. And so that communications plan would be key to helping our teachers better understand sub usage. And it's part of a larger question that we are, larger issue that we have within our culture of leave usage across the board. And so wanting to address leave and how we use leave as a system is something that's on our, on my to-do list.
Got it. Yeah. So, thank you. I think that is a good reason to put it up there and have us talking about it. But if you think about it, it's $14 a day before taxes, and I don't know that that's going to change anybody's mind about whether or not to sub on Friday. I don't know. Maybe. And that, so the top one, and I'm going back to Slide 13, if we could do that, and look at, now if we go to 14350, and now I'm looking at the bottom part, the pink bar, right? That puts us 14350 for a retiree or teacher license for short-term. That puts us $25 above market. And then all the way on the right, 182 a day puts us $22 above market. So I'm kind of wondering whether we could bite off part of that, but not all of it, and still be competitive, and, you know, spend less money. And I mean, I know that's not going to be a popular thing to say, but if we took some of the money that we saved from doing less, maybe we compensate employees more for unused leave. You know, maybe we put it somewhere else as another kind of incentive. So I'm not convinced that we should go that high on those.
So one of the things that we considered with the group was looking at that, that teacher quality was one of the criteria that we looked at. It also takes us back to the differential that we had prior to the budget reduction, where there was the $6 differential between what a regular sub would make and then what a retired sub would make. And so we wanted to at least throw out there mirroring that. It helped us, it helps us improve the, the quality of the pool. And using the data that we had, it would have increased our, our fill rates by 2%. So we did want to at least consider that with the, the thought or the hope that more of our retired teachers would take advantage of wanting to come back and sub.
Right, but I, I hear you. I think one of the reasons that we decided to do that, as unpopular as it was at the time, was because we were so far above market in that area. So I, I just, again, it's a lot of money, and I'm not convinced we need to go that far yet.
Ms. Pautch?
Thank you. If we could go back to the last slide with the recommendations. So some of this is very new and not included in our budget. I think I agree with my colleagues that I, I'm pretty hesitant about the $2 Fridays. I think we'd need some more research before going that, that way. Let, let's focus on the leave buyback, if we know that's effective and could actually, you know, bring us some savings in the long term, and I think it's just the right thing to do for employees. A nice incentive. I also, I'm, I would support some of the non-budgetary impact. I have a lot of consternation at requiring the documentation for illness. I just, I guess I, I want to see more before we went that route of why the impact, you know, who would be most impacted by doing that. I believe in the past, we've had pools where, where employees could put into the pool, the leave pool. So for instance, if someone was suffering from a long-term illness or other things, they could support each other. Have you looked at that?
So we, we haven't had a, a sick leave pool for 15 years. We currently have a short-term visibility provider. Open enrollment starts today. That's a little plug for everybody. And if you look at your open enrollment documents, you'll see that our provider is shifting because of a buyout. But it's Liberty Mutual, formerly Liberty Mutual, and so we no longer have a sick leave bank in Fairfax. And our, our leave expert, Dee Holly Brown, is at the table. So if there were any questions about that, she would certainly be able to answer.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking, is are we not able to have a sick leave pool? Is there a reason why we did not consider that option as opposed to this proposed regulation?
So the last time we had one was 1999. It was done away with with the implementation of an integrated disability management program. And as we brought that program in, we increased the amount of sick and, and disability supports that we provide. Most of those are provided out of the FCPS pocket and are not supported or contributed to by the employees themselves. We did away with the pool for some very valid reasons. When we did the analysis in 1999, and I wasn't here, but I've read the materials, that pool was not administered in, in a very equitable fashion. And so instead of trying to continue in a, in a vein that it would have to be centrally administered, we came up with a completely different approach, and it's worked pretty well over time. I think that that's demonstrated by the fact that the state has now implemented very similar programs based on ours.
Okay. And, and I guess my question would be, are, are there other systems that are, that maybe have a program that does work? Because I, I have heard from some employees who felt that that really was, you know, a good way to approach this.
So we do have a number of surrounding jurisdictions that do them. Most of the ones that have a sick leave bank or pool either have moved to centrally administer them, which requires additional staffing. And then there are some that have them that are looking to do away with them and step into integrated disability management the way we've done it.
Okay. So I'm not sure, the next step, except that at this point, I wouldn't support the regulation unless, you know, well, no, I wouldn't. I'd like to see more information before we, we start to consider that. And then the continuing to reduce trainings, so does that mean that we shift trainings to more Tuesday through Thursday? Is that, thank you. Is that what that means, reduce trainings Mondays and Fridays?
Yes, reducing trainings on Mondays and Fridays. We're, our, our Office of Program, of Professional Learning and Family Engagement, they're currently looking at that, and they have done a lot to shift already. There are some space concerns, because when you have a system this large, if you're not going to train on Monday nor, nor train on Friday, then where do you house that training on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? And so while it's not optimal to have trainings on those days, we have reduced. If you notice the, the slide that shows the downward trend for professional development requests, it's that we're moving in the right direction, and we'll continue to, to consider not using those days. But there are some things where we just have to use a Monday or a Friday for a training.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I guess my last question, if we can do the top three, you know, I would like us to consider those. Is there a reason why we've included PG County and Manassas City in our markets? I don't know that I necessarily consider them to be our biggest competitors, and would that change our analysis?
So we, the methodology we used is we took the larger market that was used for the compensation study and narrowed that down to more closely, more close geographically, more closely geographically situated. I don't know. I'm not saying it the right way, jurisdictions when conducting our analysis. I'm not sure what the full extent of removing those two jurisdictions would have on the, the bottom line in terms of the comparison.
Is that easy to do?
Something we could rerun, though. Yes.
Thank you.
I think Dr. Brayburn has to leave, so we need to move it along. Oops.
Mr. Moon?
I know we're under time constraints, so I'm going to limit my questions to maybe two, three. And all the questions that I sent in over the weekend, hopefully you can get back to me offline.
Yes, we can give this to you offline.
Okay. My overall concern is this, with the, with the substitute pay, it is low. And you mentioned about unemployment rate in Fairfax County being only 2.5%. I'm sure that that has probably a lot of impact on not having enough, you know, substitutes. But, you know, looking at the slide number 13, I think perhaps, you know, most of our substitutes belong to a bachelor's degree short-term. Am I correct in that, assuming that? But, go ahead.
Yes, you're correct.
And the other ones, about 10% below the market, the other ones. And we're not, we're not quite addressing that as much as others. There's where my concerns rise, because probably that has the biggest impact on finding more substitutes. Because, I mean, it's anecdotal, but I've heard from people that, why is that so low? How are you going to be able to attract people to actually work as a substitute? So, you know, I'm not necessarily that I, that I do not support all the recommendations, but I thought that we might deal with that issue more than anything else. So that's where I am on that.
Mr. Moon, is that a, a next step? Is that a request? Because I don't think this plan deals with it, correct? Are you asking?
I don't know. The next step on about that's just to comment on my state of mind at this point.
Okay.
And next question, very short question is this, that your recommendation for paying additional $2 for Fridays, a question came to my mind was that whether there is any school districts surrounding us doing something similar to that?
I, I'm not aware of any. It's, you know, something that we were throwing, throwing at the wall and trying to really come up with ways to address.
So you're not aware of any of those schools that are doing that?
Right.
But my, one last question is this, this can be, you can send me a response in writing. What are our current policies regarding a being able to accumulate and do something at the time of retirement with the sick leaves and personal leaves? Whether they're providing additional incentive of being able to buy back, whether that is a better option for most of the employees who may be retiring from us if they have option to use that to be as a credit toward their retirement at the end?
So employees that are currently enrolled in the legacy program do have that option to use that time that they have remaining towards retirement credit. Anyone that's in the ERFC 2001 Plan does not have that as an option.
So they just lose it? They just lose it?
And so that would be a major ERFC plan change to bring that back into ERFC. So as we thought about ways to compensate those employees who are in the 2001 Plan, it would be to possibly provide them cash payout at the end of their service to Fairfax County Public Schools. And other jurisdictions do do that. I know that Ms. Burden was actually talking about some of the practices in Loudoun County and other counties where she's worked.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Corbin Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I want to follow up on the Slide 13 and the market average for BAs providing substitute services. And given the conversation we've had earlier tonight about our compensation and always wanting to be between 95 and 105%, I think we should look at that. And if you look at 95 to 105% of the market average, you see that it should be about $106.41 for, as much as $117.61 for our BAs offering substitute services. And so I do, I would love as a follow-up to have someone run numbers on what the impact of doing that would be. And along the same lines, if we, you know, somehow run a model as to what the impact of changing that number versus changing the retirees or a hybrid of that, I think would be helpful. As far as the menu of options, I am fine with the leave buyback program. I think it's a great idea. As I mentioned, I would like on the short-term and long-term retiree to look at that 95 to 105% model for the market scale. And then for the options with no budgetary impact, I am fully supportive of what's there. I absolutely understand where you're coming from, Ms. Pautch, but as we become more, you know, we try to put systems in place, the concept of having to provide documentation if you are a, somebody who is sick often, that's a pretty traditional practice within the most organizations, so I don't have a problem with that. And I do think we should continue to reduce trainings on Mondays and Fridays.
Megan? Sorry? Okay.
I'm trying to figure out the most delicate way to put this. I, I don't think these solutions actually match the analysis that needed to be done when I started running the numbers. You know, I have the greatest respect for our retired teachers, but when you look at the composition of our substitute pool and the five-year data that we gathered, our retirees make up about 20% of our, our substitute pool, and five years later, they made up 19% of our pool. So we had about a 1%, you know, one percentage point differential that changed over five years. So in terms of the concern that we're having a substitute shortage, and part of it is, let's see if we can entice our retirees to come back. There's such a small number, and these solutions, we need to be figuring out, what are we doing about the 80% of the positions we need to get people filling our substitutes? And the solutions really aren't there. I, I was looking at the pay of a non-degree person versus someone with a bachelor's degree, which, it, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Corbin Sanders. You're correct. It's the same. So we have a lot of families, again, military or otherwise, who are here for a short period of time. It, people don't end up getting the jobs, so they're willing to substitute. But certainly not at $100 a day when you have a bachelor's degree. You'll just go find part-time work somewhere else. So I'm actually hoping with Dr. Nixon, you're joining us, that a next step here is, we need to go back to this menu of options. I don't think it's as strategic or as targeted to what we need. And the, the differential in pay for what we're going to give the retiree, while it's wonderful, they're a small portion of our pool, and it's a big change. And I think it was Mr. Moon who brought up that we're actually like $10 below the market average. And Ms. Corbin Sanders, you touched on too, for those who we would get, who have a bachelor's degree, that we would want in the classroom. And that's the largest volume that we're trying to figure out how to draw back in. I also want to see as a next step, how do we look at what Karen Garza put in place when we had to freeze teacher pay? And part of the trade-off is, she said, we got to freeze their pay, so we'll go ahead and add more personal days. Well, we came out of the recession, we've been able to now infuse, you know... Well, we came out of the recession, we've been able to now infuse, you know, tens if not hundreds of millions of dollars now into our teachers' salary scales, but we still have the, the holdover of the pay. And I think that our teachers would probably say, don't go paying all that money into substitute pay if I know that's because I'm, I'm drawing on something I didn't use to. I'd rather you just make sure I keep getting my step increase and I get my market scale adjustment. So I'm kind of looking at, you know, we're layering on something here in terms of what we did during the recession. And so my other next step is gonna be, I want to know what are the number of days that teachers can use by jurisdiction in the WABE? I don't want it swirled around into an average number. I want to be able to see in our WABE schools, what are the personal number of days that, that teachers are being allotted? And that can help drive us on, are we way above what we're giving them? And that's where our substitute pay costs, which we were told did go up dramatically when, when we said to our teachers, we're sorry, we're not compensating you, but we'll give you the gift of time. Which I think is great, but now our compensation's back up, and...
We can give you that answer right now with the, for the WABE guide.
Well, I appreciate that. My concern is that my colleagues are leaving, so I'd rather that you can send it in a Brayburn briefing. But I, I do think we're gonna need a, a follow-up work session on this. And I do think that some of my colleagues also said, I'm not a fan of making Fridays more enticing for just bringing in people. Instead, what I'd like to do is have that cultural change again of helping our teachers understand that what's happening with our leave. The analysis needs to be done even at the building level. It was done for one of my elementary schools where there was concern that the building was unhealthy, and so people were out sick. And then actually the analysis came through, we just had a lot of teachers gone between May and June. And it wasn't actually during the school year scattered around, it was concentrated. So I, I feel like there's a lot more analysis that needs to happen about what's driving our substitute usage. And then we find the solutions that address it. But these possible solutions, I, I'm not even sure which ones I'm, I'm comfortable supporting right now because, as I said, I think Ms. Hines, you were looking at, you know, we did this massive boost for our retired teachers, but we're leaving the 80% of our substitute pay not competitive. And I don't think that's where our problem is, so. I'm sure there's more, oh, and then the buyback piece. Also, again, I would like to see as a next step, show me by each jurisdiction what their buyback policy is. Because our proposal here of $5 an hour buyback, as compared to what? I think you gave us in the appendix three different jurisdictions, but they're all over the place. So I want to make sure, I think our buyback program could be fantastic for saving money, reducing kids having substitutes, which substitutes aren't good for kids. But I don't have any context to know why $5 an hour suddenly is gonna be an attractive component. So I'd like to look at a proven model that shows where it's... And, and I will also make note, what do we do with LT and Gatehouse employees with their unused leave and pay? How does that compare to what we're proposing for the teachers? Because I, I know that is something that we provide our retirees for the leadership team and Gatehouse, and I think we need to be looking at what are we doing for the teachers? Because it sure needs to be on par.
Ms. McLaughlin, can we allow him to, I think he wanted to respond.
Absolutely. I just, as you can see, I wanted to like really fast throw my questions on the table in case...
It's fine.
Yep.
So in terms of the leave buyback component, so the jurisdictions that are listed in the appendix are the ones within the competitive market area that have the program. And so I've taken the language from their leave policies or their buyback policies and pasted that into that slide.
So Prince William has no buyback?
Correct.
Okay.
So what we did in terms of the methodology, arriving at the $5 value for the, the buyback, is we took a look at what the value would be in terms of the VRS plan. And we went right to the VRS document to see what the value was in terms of connecting that to the buyback for the service credit. And so that's how we arrived at that $5 figure.
Thank you, Sean. And I think this might be just a perfect reminder again, we used to get a report and then a PowerPoint. And now we've resorted to just PowerPoints. And so the problem is, we don't get to have a lot of this valuable contextual information that you're providing in the Q and A, but I think it's something we need to be thinking about because that helps a lot to understand this information.
Sir?
Okay.
Okay. I just want to give some very quick input from the field. A little bit of is my own and some is, you know, conversations from the faculty workroom. In my previous school, some days we had seriously as many as 18 teachers out in a given day. And that's just devastating for the school, for the kids, for the program. Because we never could get 18 subs at one school. So those gaps had to be covered in all sorts of creative ways, usually increasing class size for the remaining teachers, taking away planning periods and putting them in on duty with the kids and so forth. So at my, that school, I don't know what the average is mathematically, but, you know, eight to 10 a day was just commonplace. Regarding leave, I would say among teachers, the use it or lose it framework definitely provides an incentive for teachers to use leave they don't really need. They just don't want to lose it. That's human nature. Regarding the Friday sub shortage, addressing limiting professional development is one thing, but I want to remind people that there's such a thing as in-school but out of classroom, things that teachers do. So it could be CLTs, it could be, in my school, there were all-day grade-level meetings. So if you have, you know, five or six fifth-grade classes and all the fifth-grade or sixth-grade teachers are out that day, they're in school, but they're not in with their kids, again, it's devastating for anything worthwhile academically to, to actually occur. And then just quick feedback on subs themselves. I would say over my time, if I knew the sub ahead of time, then he or she was typically experienced. And that's why we developed a relationship and why they came in and so forth. But if I didn't know the sub ahead of time, such as if I just put my leave need in the system and somebody was assigned or volunteered, they were largely inexperienced and often had, to my mind, somewhat limited English. So they, now, some of that might have been because I'm a PE teacher, some of it might have been the specifics of the school I was at or the place we were. But most of the people that I got, if I didn't already know them, weren't very good. And for example, I would not trust a class to them alone. So for example, every time my partner was out, that meant I was on every period, even if it wasn't my period, and vice versa.
And I think what we've heard is that from teachers, it's the, having the experienced retiree in the classroom is a, a good thing to have in the classroom.
So are we going to next steps? Okay.
I haven't gone yet. So can we go to, I'm gonna try to go quickly. I know this information well because I did the meeting manager stuff, so slide six. So the, the reason why this is such a key slide, and I, I don't know if it's intuitive, is if you look at the red, which are the non-retiree subs, it's relatively constant, especially over the last three years. I mean, it's not perfect, but that's not where the attrition has been. So where we've been really hurt is in the loss of retiree subs. And so, yes. No, I'm sorry, Megan, that's not correct. That's not, that's not correct. Do you see?
Excuse me, ladies.
Hold on.
I want you to finish.
Okay.
Ms. McLaughlin, if you would just allow her to finish, thank you.
So the, the attrition within the retiree pool has been the thing that has caused, as, as you've just heard anecdotally, but that's repeated so often, that, that if there is a relationship there, we're going to retiree subs. And when you have a predictable, there's a predictability in retiree subs filling positions that when you lose that many, our ability to fill is more likely with a predictable sub than a less predictable sub. So that's one of my concerns of the retiree slot. Then can we please go to slide 10? So I'm just addressing the point that you brought up about the, the Friday and the potential out. I mean, the, if you look at the purple slot and to see the decline down to 5,400, that is the slot that's Friday, personal, professional development outside, like maybe in school. But is that, am I correct? I just, I'm trying to get a clarification on that.
It can be a combination. It could be system-wide professional development, or it could be individual.
Right. So the, the thing that bothers me in this trend is the light gray bar, which is the, the sick leave. And this is where that time, where I think actually the leave buyback program is brilliant. You actually save, I think we calculated 67 cents on the dollar. If you have employees, because as they get further towards the end of their career, they, I mean, it is, it's human nature. You've earned that sick leave, and if there is no bankability of that, if there is no outcome of that, they're gonna burn it. They're gonna burn it, burn it, burn it, and you don't blame them. Whereas if you create an incentive that at a certain cap, up to a certain level, on the day you retire, you're gonna walk away with a $15,000 check for your leave, people are not gonna burn that. You need to disincentivize them on that trend. And I, I think this is wise. They've, they've, there are other jurisdictions that do it. And it actually will save us money because the time value, it's not only the 67 cents on the dollar, but the time value of money by not paying for substitutes now, you're paying them in future dollars for sick leave now. This is like the reverse, you know? I'll gladly pay you tomorrow for a hamburger today. So I'm very happy about the leave buyback program. I think it is, I think it is, it's very smart, it's very strategic, and it gets, on a culture change, it gets them invested in depressing something that is costing us, you know, 23, 25, 28 million dollars a year. And student learning. So I mean, I, I think it's actually an incalculable potential savings. Can we please go to slide 13? I do agree with those who have expressed on the leave, I think Pat was one of the first ones who brought it up. I don't know what the, split the difference is, but is there, is there a way to go part of the way? I, I don't want to be, I don't, I don't want to be penny-wise and pound foolish on this and then do the change and it actually doesn't make, I mean, I want to do it enough. And I'm not sure what that number is, but potentially is there someplace in between? And I don't necessarily mean right in the middle. I don't disagree with Ms. McLaughlin on the bachelor's degree 101. If as a ratio of, if 4,000, you know, roughly, out of 5,000 or about that are coming from that bachelor's, is there potential to, you know, scooch that up a little bit? So that's my position on that. I do like actually not having a separate report. I like having the appendices at the back because I can reference them in the same document. So I like the fact that the additional data to the slides is within the document. I, I actually think it's, it's helpful. Can we please go to slide 14, the next slide? Oh, this is the, this is the buyback. And then slide 15? I, I'm not certain that the raising the rates on Fridays, I don't know that that will help. What I don't want to do is have us get into doing too many things so that we can't figure out which thing worked. So, you know, raising the, you know, some of the rates and instituting a leave buyback program, to me, in addition with the communications on the culture, because I think some of that starts to change the culture and improves the communication plan about why this is not good. So I, I feel like that's enough. I feel like the Friday thing is maybe like, well, let's try that too, and I don't, I don't want to mess up the soup. So where I stand on pro-increasing, actually, not only the retiree rate, but actually the bachelor's rate as well, and maybe not as much on the retiree, but we'll see. And then I am pro, 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 pro leave buyback. That is not a cost. Let me just keep emphasizing this to, to my colleagues. This is a savings. This is how you be a smart steward and build a culture with your employee base that invests everybody in the outcome of students and uses taxpayer money wisely. So I'm very much in favor of that.
Okay, well, did you want to say? Okay.
Can we go back to the slide that had the vertical columns of various days? And, yeah, thank you. As, sorry, as I understand it, you're, we're discussing buyback for unused sick leave, but not buyback for unused personal leave? Is that correct?
Personal leave is sick leave. Sick leave is the allocation individuals can use up to five days of their sick leave for personal reasons. So there's not a separate allocation.
So it would be, so the, the red at the bottom, the 11,530 over here on Fridays, would still be in the category that you can, it would be bought back?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, what, six people here? Okay. I just want to say, I do agree, we need to explore some of these things. I, I don't agree with the Friday thing, that, I, I just think that could go very, very wrong. I'm very intrigued by the, the buyback, but I wonder, and I'm not sure, I didn't look at the appendix, whether we have an appendix of what our surrounding jurisdictions are doing. But I'd like to look at the possibility. I know that some instituted a cap, I don't know how much we explored that. And then the bachelor's category, I think, is, is fairly essential. I don't, I don't know why somebody without a degree would be treated the same. But, okay, so let's go to the next steps.
Mine was actually the impact of changing the non-retiree, the BA rates, to within the 95 and 105% of the market scale.
Could I ask a question, Ms. Corbett Sanders? If we look at that within that range, would you also like us to, to consider that the current placeholder that we have with the same dollars or bring back whatever the cost would be?
So I'm actually gonna come, add one additional, which is to have a placeholder, of increasing the placeholder from the .9 that you have to 1.4, which would essentially take advantage of the numbers at the end in your recommendations of the .8, the .1, the .5. And what we wouldn't be funding is the .6 of the $2 Fridays.
Okay, we could do that.
Okay, so I'd like to ask everybody to just take a look, quick look at what's up there and make sure it's okay before we go over it. I think Pat stepped away, so we can't.
Karen, do you mean on your first one, non-retiree, do you mean bachelors?
Bachelors, purely bachelors.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure we can vote. Okay, did anybody need any changes in what you have up there? So let's go through these.
Oh, Ms., sorry, Ms. Keyskamara, I just wanted to make sure there's another next step that I wanted to have included.
Okay.
So where there was the communications plan for teachers about the culture, trying to find the exact language on where that was. trying to find the exact language on where that was. There needs to be a communications plan for our principals and our regional superinten-, area superintendents. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll find that there, but yeah, so it had said a communication plan for teachers on the challenges creating, created by using leave. That communications plan needs to include our principals and the RASs, because if we're having professional development and CLTs and things being done, as Mr. Little so very helpfully pointed out, I mean, that alone, there, we shouldn't be doing.
But it's the teachers that are using the leave.
Right. I understand, but the principals and the RASs are the supervisors, and so if they're able to say, look, we build in X number of professional development days, and we build in teacher workdays, and we can't be having these things happen during the instructional time for students. I just.
And so that would be a blanket communication that would go for everyone. I think that we were focused on the teachers using the leave, but I understand the nuance of the syntax there, so we will.
You mean, you mean to include the reasons, not just from the teacher's perspective, but how the regions and the principals use their leave?
No, I meant I want them included in the communications plan, that they, they also need to be part of the solution, which is to be working and collaborating with the teachers and saying, let's not do CLTs and other professional development. I mean, principals run professional development days too, and those shouldn't be scheduled during instructional days.
And we do encourage that. I think we could go back and monitor it closely, but we do try to stay away from Mondays and Fridays.
No, and I really appreciate that, but like I said, for offline, I'll bring some data to all of you guys. If you saw what one of my elementary schools' leave time was in May and June, it's clearly elective.
Can, Ms. McLaughlin, can we just clarify that? I think you're talking about to create a more global, comprehensive culture, culture change, culture shift.
Yep, communications plan for the culture change.
And as we think about leave across the system, as we talk about the culture, it's from more than just instructional, it's leave across the system.
All right, is everybody comfortable now with the language that's up there? Mr. Moon, you had something that I thought was a next step. Is it up there? You said it was something else.
That's in number one, but I guess my next step would be, unlike prior two topics where we are, we were able to give a superintendent the guidance on his proposed budget to come to us in January, I don't think we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
So, you know, perhaps prior to January, we have another work session on this one. I mean, I
Yes.
don't know whether we can actually accommodate with the schedule, but I'm going to have to discuss with the Madam Chair.
Do you want to put that as a next step?
Yes.
And do, my question is about the placeholder increase, which would have budgetary impact as we develop the fiscal or develop, start to begin to develop the budget. Do we have consensus around increasing that from a .9 to 1.4?
We're going to vote on this shortly.
I don't know that I agree with that.
I don't think we voted on it yet.
Because you're talking about changing, I'm sorry, about .9 to 1.4.
That's just a, we haven't voted on it yet.
Yeah.
The placeholder.
I mean, I would, I would love to know what the number would be from one.
Right, I think I need more information for that. So can we just go through it in order? Okay?
I just need to, I need to clarify number five, which was mine. So where it says provide exact number of professional days teachers are allotted, the exact number of personal days that are allotted. I also, it was supposed to also include the analysis of the usage, change in usage since Dr. Garza, you know, whichever year, you can figure that out. Remember when she? Okay, provide information, I guess, yeah, I would prefer analysis. I want the analysis based on, yeah. Just, yeah, thanks.
Can we go through everything now? Okay. Who can agree with number one? Okay, that's good. And.
Number two just takes out the $600,000 for the $2 Fridays, is why I had suggested. And actually, it's, it would go to 1.3, but I'm thinking with the first one above it, that may be 1.4.
So I'm not sure I understand that one myself.
You currently have in our budget guidance to the superintendent, .9 million to address the substitute pay. Then if you look at the recommendations at the end of the report, it has 1.9 million. And so what this would do, oh, thank you, is bring it down into more the realm of what they need as a placeholder for addressing substitute pay.
That's not mine.
Right, get your phones away from your microphones. So I can't support this. I can't support this because I don't know on the potential other retirees, like, I don't know what are the rates they could bring back with the bachelors. And so I don't know that one, I don't know that this is the right amount. So I'm not willing to, and that's sort of like, we're not there yet, what Il Young was saying, is I'm not willing to say what the placeholder is yet until I get some more information on maybe splitting the baby on the retiree rate and the bachelor's rate. I need more information before I can provide a direction on a placeholder.
I don't have a problem with that. I was just trying to get us to a place where, for planning purposes, we were moving forward in, you know, we've got, we're chunking out money now as to what we expect, and I was concerned that we were not going to be able to get all of the data we need. Whereas if we give them a certain amount of money that says, okay, no more than 1.4 or 1.5 million additional for substitute pay, it gives staff a little bit of wiggle room, but it doesn't allocate the $2 an hour on Fridays.
Did you want to put that in a parking lot, or would you like for us to vote on that?
We can pull together the numbers based on what we've heard here today and then bring back what that costing might look like. I think that I was looking for whether or not you wanted to be cost neutral within the .9, or if we could go beyond. What I'm hearing is that what the costs are, bring those back, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. All right, number three, what? Go back to menu of options. Okay. Did you want to explain this? At dinnertime?
Yeah. Now, so what I was saying is that the current menu of options really isn't, it was only addressing predominantly the retiree pay. I think everybody else has kind of captured that there are other areas that we need to do. So I would just change the wording to say, we need to enhance the menu of options and address.
Provide more options. How about that?
Provide additional options beyond, you know, the retiree pay.
And Ms. Nixon?
I have just a clarifying question, because I wrote down a note, I think, while you were speaking, and I think you alluded to maybe even the way in which we recruit the subs, not the retirees, but that other percentage of subs that are
Bachelors.
either bachelors or AA, and what the recruiting steps are for them as well. Did I?
Oh, no, I don't think I was saying that, but I probably was just talking about that 80% of our retire, 80% of our substitutes are the non-retirees. And that's where I would like to see our menu of options to address attracting them to sign up.
All right.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, I just interpreted that as needing to understand what the recruiting process was like, so.
Oh, I think it's just enticing them with better pay.
Okay.
Okay, who can support this one? Number three. Okay, number four, I believe that was a go. Number four, provide analysis on the options KG put in place when teacher pay had to be, or Karen Garza put in place when the teacher pay had to be frozen. So you're just asking for information on what it was so we can understand?
So what I meant by the analysis is that we know that once she added those in, then we did see an uptick in our requests for leave, our use of substitute pay. And now that we've come through the recession and we've invested so much in teacher compensation, then because four and five are tied together, which is, let's look at what the WABE areas are in terms of personal days, looking also at what happened once Karen Garza put that in place, and do we maybe have some, you know, some pragmatic approaches going forward that would be one of our menu options, which is maybe we bring back some of those days, because it's all going to go to part of the paying people for unused leave.
So I'm understanding you to say that you'd like those options that existed under Karen Garza to be included in what used to say menu of options up at the top, no? Right. The same as she said to have. Okay, all right, so who can support that? I think it's the same as something we already wrote, or similar.
I mean, it's basically saying, what does the data tell us that happened when Karen Garza put that into place, and does it still serve a purpose?
And whether or not we should roll back and go back to the three days versus the five.
Mr. Moon?
You know, getting, because I'm forgetting all those options people have existed. You know, getting information is one thing, but whether I'm prepared to put those back is another, so.
So this would be.
I support getting information.
This is, this is purely for informational purposes, okay.
Because those are things that we did consider, but one, so yes.
Okay, hands, okay. All right, that was number four. Number five, provide exact number of personal days teachers are allotted in each of the WABE districts. I'm sorry?
I'm just wondering, is that information collected by WABE?
Yes, we have that. We can get that.
Okay. All right, next, I think that passes. Number six, provide the buyback policy in WABE districts include LT members and gatehouse staff along with teachers.
Right, so right now, we only have the buyback policies for the Virginia schools that were in the appendix. And I was saying, broaden it a little bit more, just for a lens of understanding. It's fine, at minimum, I think that, don't you think we should be looking at, what is our buyback policy on unused leave for our gatehouse employees versus our teachers?
So there is, so the only other buyback that we have for leave would be for leadership team members, and that's part of the contract. But there are no buyback options for employees unless you're in the legacy ERFC plan.
Right, right, so there are no other buybacks, and then the only other thing you're talking about is comparing to Maryland, and you're talking about a different funding mechanism. I mean, you have a, you're not in a right-to-work state. I mean, it's very, very different.
That's fine. I would agree with that, Ms. Schultz. So Mr. Smith, what you're saying is that other than leadership team members or these legacy employees, everyone else, there's no such thing as unused leave, people get paid at the end of their contracts.
Yes.
Okay, does that satisfy you, Ms. McLaughlin? Okay, number seven.
That one can get taken off.
Yes. Our parking lot, yeah, there's nothing in there.
Well, we're, Ms. Burden reminded me of annual leave. If we're talking sick leave, it's a different, but for annual leave payouts for employees who leave the system, there are annual leave payouts based on annual leave that you have.
Okay.
I mean, in terms of the semantics, whatever, I'm just trying to understand what, when we're looking at how to reduce people using, however the annual leave is in the classroom, that we incentivize them to get, to be able to carry it over, save it up, and get paid out.
I just, I want to focus this conversation.
Yes, you can make it to Virginia, not WABE if you want.
This conversation is about sick leave, though. It's not about annual leave, and then I'm worried that this is going to muddy the water. We need to be focused on what the issue is and what we're talking about, and it's sick leave usage. So I'd like us, I don't, I mean, if you want to have a conversation about that offline, I, you know.
That's fine. If, if, the days that Karen Garza gave to the employees, you're telling me that was just five additional six days?
Well, I think, I think by approving what we did in number four, you're going to get them to provide the analysis of what Karen did and what the impact was, and whether there's any recommendation for rolling any of that back, but, okay, thank you.
All right, number seven, include principals and RAS and communication plan for the culture change is slide 15, so they can be part of the solution. Did you need to speak to that, Ms.? Oh, you're voting. We're voting. Everybody, okay, we're good.
Ms. Kieske-Mara, I think there's one missing, which is eliminate the option for $2 an hour on Friday rates.
Okay. I think we all said that, so maybe we need to write it. Does everybody support that? Okay.
I'm sorry, isn't that in number two?
No, no, actually, I thought number two, we were getting rid of because people didn't want to increase the.
What was, what was behind the comma on number two was actually deleted, I believe. And then we need to decide whether we want to.
Yeah, two was deleted altogether.
Altogether, okay. Two was deleted altogether. Well, we can make it, make it number seven. Do we need to put on here work session, Madam Chair? Okay, follow-up work session on this very same, please. Can I get a show of hands? So, thank you. All right, good night, everybody.